The United States of America, the Republic of States, one nation, indivisible, with no day, just as well.
We have any citizen statements or petitions? See hands up. I don't believe we have any correspondents to the board. So let's uh. Skip over town hall update for now. Item six, consider reappointment, the Democratic registrar, Helen Pond. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm looking at three thirty-one twenty-six.
Second. Favor.
All right.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd ask. Zach Blake, Division Local Services, Department of Revenue, and Chris's counterpart to come up. And they're gonna give a presentation for a long anticipated financial review they've been working on for several months.
I'm meeting you first.
Sure.
Meeting at six thirty-one P M.
As I said, welcome to Zach Blake and Chris Wilcock. From the Division Local Services.
Yeah, great. Thank you guys. Thanks for doing this. I go through it. This is a great extensive report and appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you.
And we just, we discussed this, discussed this for. At least a couple of years. So it was good to have you finally get us in the queue. And I know you met with an awful lot of people, spent an awful lot of time. And we're looking forward to hearing your recommendations. And tonight, we're gonna hear your report. And we're not really gonna take any action on it tonight. This is really for us all to to hear and understand it. And then as the weeks and months go on, we'll. Break this up to the individual departments and people that need to take action to implement this plan. And I have you on my cell phone, so we'll be calling you. I'm sure quite a bit.
Happy to.
If that, maybe you can take us through your report.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting us, members of the board. I appreciate you having us out this evening. I've got a short slide deck to to run through. Just as far as an agenda, I'm gonna give you a little bit of the background and for the members of the public as well as to who's the Division Local Services. More importantly, who is the Financial Management Resource Bureau that you invited in to conduct this financial management review? And then going to go into a little bit of the scope of the work we do. I'm gonna give you a brief little snapshot of the community from. The work that we did. I will outline sort of what a financial management review involves. And then we will go through, I chunked up the recommendations. And so. You know, I don't, you know, in my experience doing this in hundreds of different communities, I find that it's it's easier not rather than going through every single recommendation to sort of put them through in chunks. And so but I I welcome ending all questions at the end related to any of the recommendations. We're here, find your time. So we're happy to answer those questions. But if I don't know if there's somebody who can advance the slides, that would be fantastic.
All over.
Give you the signal. So we're, we're good with the agenda slide. We can jump ahead. So just, you know, some background on who we are as the Division Local Services. So we are a state regulatory agency that Chris and I work for. Just as a little bit of a background. I am the chief of the Financial Management Resource Bureau where I have worked for, oh, just over the last fifteen years. Prior to that, I worked in a community in Massachusetts. Started out in in human resources, then went more into facilities management before jumping over to the division where I head up the Financial Management Resource Bureau. The, and Chris, I can let you introduce yourself.
Yeah, Chris Wilcock, Bureau of Local Assessment. We support, you know, three hundred fifty-one different municipalities for assessing, providing guidance and and resources. We have about two and a half million parcels across the state. So just a lot of information. Before I came to DLS, I was an assessor for two decades. In four or five different communities around the Commonwealth. I have practical as well as policy experience. And. You know, a lot of this report is stuff that I dealt with day to day. So as sub commander expert on local assessment, a lot of those, as Zach said, chunks. Ask me any specific, you know, nuts and bolts questions about those, not only the policy side, but the practical side. And again, just being here to answer your specific questions on any of the assessing operations is is my intent. So thanks for having us here tonight.
Thanks, Chris. And as, as Chris alluded to, we're, so we're a division made up of five different bureaus. I'm not gonna go through every bullet on the on the slide, but there's really two primary regulatory functions we provide. One is the fairness and equity of local property taxes, which Chris heads up. There's also the Bureau of Accounts, which is responsible, if you're familiar with the tax recap sheet and getting your tax rate certified, as well as the certification of your free cash every year. So that's the Bureau of Accounts. We're also responsible for distributing local aid to cities and towns. We also have an I T unit that's responsible for a lot of the data visualizations in the website. So if you haven't recently, I would absolutely encourage you to go onto our website. But our Training Resource Center, there's a tremendous amount of information there, videos, other content and data to mine to learn more about local government. In sort of broad context, but as also at a very detailed sort of technical level. And then there's a tremendous amount of information that you can use to benchmark your community against other communities. And that's all data that we're pulling directly from you when you submit information to us. And then I head up the Financial Management Resource Bureau. For about the past thirty years or so, we've been a bureau that really provides consulting related services to cities and. By poll, my team is a field of experts in accounting, treasury collections, assessing. They've served in roles like finance directors, treasurer collectors. You know, I came from a facilities background, but collectively, we also volunteer in our communities. You know, I myself serve on a number of different boards and committees in my own town. But many members of my team do as well. So we bring that breadth of experience in the work that we do in cities and towns across the Commonwealth. Altogether, I sort of stopped counting after about two hundred and fifty, but I've been north three hundred communities across the Massachusetts, along with my team. And so we were bringing that collective experience and expertise that we found in what works, what doesn't work at a very practical level. We're not trying to be academic here. This is not about being ivory tower. This is with. How can we right size our recommendations for a community like Mendon? Because we know Mendon, as much as there's three hundred and fifty-one communities, and there's a lot of similarities, there's a uniqueness too. And so we want to make sure that we're fitting these recommendations in sort of the context of the community that's there. And and just so you have a sort of a sampling of the work that we do. Yeah, on the financial measure review that I'll jump into, we provide financial forecasts, capital plans, financial policies. We analyze really anything related to financial management in cities and towns. So if there's a particular challenge that a community is facing, we're called in at no cost. This was a free service to the community. To provide our expertise and analysis and deliver reports. On next slide. So what do our financial measurement reviews focus on? So they're, they're based on onsite visits and interviews that we have with local officials. So we were blessed with the opportunity to interview, I think, most everyone that touches the financial management aspect of this town, had the opportunity to meet individually with each of you. Remotely over the phone or in person. And just get that sort of collective wisdom of the roles and responsibilities that folks have in town and how, what processes, procedures are there and how people are getting their work done. Together, there's a tremendous amount of information that we're gathering. I have about a, you know, inch binder worth of data and information that I gather from the community. All the way from bylaws to everything that you submit to us through the state, as well as credit rating reports, debt schedules, reconciliations. And and we use that collective information to really guide where our recommendations are, what are the challenges that this community is facing to develop our report. And and our report really focuses on sort of four. Primary categories. One is the overall government structure. In the context of duties and responsibilities of local officials, we're looking at your forecasting, capital planning. And budget process in general, and how efficient and effective that is. We're looking at the degree of coordination and communication that goes between and among local officials, boards, committees. So for example, how well is the finance committee and the sole board communicating? How well is the treasurer collector communicating with the accountant, with the assessors, et cetera? And then it's really a measure of the general efficiency and effectiveness of local government operations and making sure that this community is maximizing whatever related resources. Are available because every community is under similar pressure like that. Next slide. So just jumping into, you know, men a little bit here. You know, we have obviously a vibrant residential community, has a great rural character. There's a rich history out there. You know, it's, it's always a pleasure for me. It's one of the fun parts of the job. Is I always give myself a good buffer to come drive around the community. I'm a visual learner type of a person, so I like to explore, get to know the community. He would exit tech. As part of that, too, I also try to take advantage, and I was lucky enough to do that, to tour the police department, the highway barn, things like that, town hall, which was getting renovated. And so it's exciting to see that. But it really gives me sort of a sense and a flavor of what kind of investment or residence making in their community. This is a town of sixty-two hundred residents. I threw in the state median there, just, you know, to benchmark yourself against the state. So a little bit smaller than the average community across Massachusetts. Twenty-five million dollar total operating budget and a little smaller than the state average. No surprise there. Seventy-seven hundred dollar average single family tax bill, a little bit north of the state average, but I think that's. I think that's really. You know, part of the fact that, you know, this tends to be a wealthier democratic community. And so there's a higher tax bill, there's a more willingness to invest in the services and education. Government structure, file number order selectmen, as you all know, town administrator, open town government, open town meeting government. Regional school district, you know, these are things that I mentioned because, you know, well, there's a lot of communities that function that way. It also makes Mendon unique in its own right. And you are lucky enough with a double A plus rating by S and P. That's a really solid rating for a community like this. And. You should be proud of that in terms of the financial management aspects. Some of the highlights and and I hate.
Just, would you prefer to hold all questions till the end, or if there's questions as we get?
Yeah, I think I'd rather have them at the end if if I can bring it back. So that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So I've got, you know, a series of highlights here, and there are obviously challenges. I don't like to look at them as challenges. These are opportunities for this community. This is a town that's been lucky enough to bring on a finance director, treasurer, collector position. You have an H R position here. You've moved from an elected to appointed highway surveyor. You're reimagining how you're providing services. You know, this, this is a community where there's, you know, eighty-three percent of your budget is reliant on the tax levy and ninety percent of that burden falls to residents. So this is a community that has, you know, every year, it's a tight budget. And that's not unusual. To communities across Massachusetts, they're constantly under that type of pressure. But, you know, there are competing service and capital demands, and those are challenges that the community, especially Mendon, are dealing with. And then there's need for greater long term planning. So we're looking for captain, capital planning, financial policies. You know, those are things that we want to start to see get baked into how this community manages itself. And then one of the other challenges you've had, there's been some turnover within finance offices. And so you're, you're starting to really sort of solidify with that management of that operation looks like. And there's some potential for turnover in some other offices, too. And so it's always important that there be succession planning around how to rethink reform. The competent operations that you've had going forward, knowing that we're in a very. Tight type of job market for local officials. It's not easy to find talent right now. It tends to be very expensive. They don't have the skill sets that unfortunately, we've sort of been blessed with for a long time. And so I think it's important that this community is coming together, sort of rethink, how do we make this work with the kind of limited budget that we have? Next slide. So the, the report itself. And that should count how many pages it was. Twenty-six pages. So it begins with an introduction that really just outlines the scope of the report and jumps into a community profile, outlines, you know, a brief description of the community. Talks about the administrative structure, the financial management operations, then gives a little description of the financial condition of the town. And then we jump into the the recommendations themselves. And I've categorized them in two sort of areas. One is sort of structural roles and responsibilities. And then the other one is on long term financial planning. And as I point out on the slide, there's eighteen total recommendations. Like I said, I'm not gonna go through every single recommendation in in any kind of a detail, but I did want to jump in in sort of, sort of these two areas and where I think. You know, it'd be good to start to build out what a blueprint looks like for a community like Mendon. So, you know, right now, you're operating with a town administrator. Whose responsibilities are outlined in job description. And in a lot of communities, we look for those responsibilities to be more codified. And so. What we're suggesting is that you do that through a bylaw that really defines and formalizes the roles and responsibilities of that office. It details the hiring, removal, how you evaluate, measure performance. These are all really core, critical issues that shouldn't be left from year to year as to, you know, how are we gonna decide to do this? This should be systemized in a lot of ways. And then understanding, you know, what level of authority we want to give this person over the budget process, over contract negotiations, over procurement. And so these are all decisions that we think it makes sense, rather than the board. Delegating these or outlining this through job description, that you really come together and formalize these responsibilities so that they're codified in bylaws, so that they. Live beyond sort of the year in which you're functioning, but are more, you know, permanent in nature. Similarly, with the, the Finance Director, Treasurer, Collector, you have a position there where you've combined your Treasurer Collector, and now that person has additional finance related responsibilities as Finance Director. However, the reality is that that person's really functioning as a Treasurer Collector. And so what we would like to see is sort of. You know, a renewed look at what responsibilities that person's taking on, making sure that they're coordinating the financial management activities of the community, that they're involved in forecasting, capital planning, and budget process. This is really a position where we would see as the quarterback of the financial management aspect of of local government. And so we would want to see that more formalized. Again, this is a role that we would typically see in bylaw or town charter. You know, develop a succession plan for the principal assessor. You know, that's an operation that has worked seamlessly for years and to the great success of Mendon. But, you know, at some point, there's always turnover in these departments, and you want to limit the amount of risks that is out there. Because we're, we are truly, especially when it comes to assessors, and Chris can start to speak more to this at the end. That the breadth and technical expertise that's required to do that job is not something you just pull off the street. And the define and replicate the model that you have today is becoming more and more effective. And so what we're looking for is just. You to start to strategize now while you have those people in place about what that office would look like and how it's going to retain the high success rate that it has now. And so it's really just highlighting that, that risk that's out there. Last two, you know, really, it's about. Similarly, with the, the town administrator and the finance director, you know, you're, you're, you have sort of a, an operating model where you're sort of functioning like a consolidated finance department. But again, it's not formalized in any way. And so we would be looking for you to formalize that relationship to really have a hierarchy where you have a finance director, then obviously combined with the treasurer collector, but also assessor and accounting position. This is becoming much, much more common in communities of this size because it sort of consolidates those responsibilities. It takes away sort of a siloed approach to financial management. And again, brings together that sort of quarterbacking position that can really make sure that all these functions are working seamlessly together to the success of Mendon. And then last, and really what this encompasses is the entire sort of structure roles and responsibilities. Is we think it's important to pull in a cross section of people from the community to form a government study committee. And that committee would largely, you know, start off with this report as a blueprint to understand. You know, are these things that Mendon wants to move in this direction? Does it value this? And how do we modify that? And and what we would look for is not only a review of the town bylaws, which we think periodic review there always makes sense, you know, generally once a decade. But also whether or not Mendon's on a stage now where it is ready for a town charter. Town charter is, is sort of the town constitution really, really lays out the structure of operations, the distribution of power, those lines of authority. And so that it's not left up to sort of the whim or, or, you know, annual decisions by whoever might be the chair, for example. So that's the structure roles and responsibilities. Just jumping into the long term financial planning. You know, this is, in a lot of ways, you know, one of the core reasons I think we were invited in here, right? So I'd be remiss if I did not include our diagram that we include in just about everything. I feel like I need that shirt made up with this thing. But really, this is, this is how we sort of define success in communities is the. Financial planning around defined financial policies, having a. Consistent and clearly defined capital plan and financial forecast. And so just jumping through these recommendations. It all starts with having a vision, goals, and objectives for this community. And so we think it's important that the select board. Once a year, start of the fiscal year, sometime August, September, sit down and you decide as a group collectively. What are our goals for this community? What do we want to achieve this year? And I always look at goals as sort of two part. There's really sort of the policy goals that you all have as elected officials of this community. There might be a particular. Issue that you ran on that you think is of value to the community that you think should be a goal. But there's also sort of structural goals that come through the organization, right? These are goals that. Individuals departments have that feed up to the town administrator. And so we would see a sort of a collection of goals and objectives, both from a policy perspective, but also an administrative framework. And that really starts to set up the success of what is this community's vision and what does it want to achieve that year? And then equally important, how do we measure that success at the end to make sure that we are achieving these goals? Next, we talk about developing a financial plan. That's really that collection of the financial policies. Every community should have rigorous defined financial policies. There shouldn't be a dollar that's not spent that hasn't been measured against a policy that's been developed, whether it's stabilization, free cash, debt. It really makes the process more simple when you've had this sort of collective. Meeting around what it is that we want our objectives to be in those types of different areas, rather than fight on, you know, a meeting floor, for example. You know, in this, this really promotes just sound, consistent, effective financial management. The other part of this is having a robust capital improvement plan. You know, the point there is really to mitigate risk, right? Equipment ages, buildings age, things fall apart, deferred maintenance is a huge problem in communities across Massachusetts. And so, you know, a lot of communities will develop five, ten, fifteen, thirty year capital plans, depending on the size and scope of buildings and equipment they have. And this is really about establishing consistent standards and setting up what those spending priorities are for the community. And then last, within the, the financial plan is a long range forecast. You, you don't know where you're going if you haven't sort of mapped out the road. And so Massachusetts, we're, we're a little bit blessed in that we don't have a really exotic revenue streams that come in. And so it's really easy for us to predict what our revenues will look like over the course of time, especially over a three year period. You measure that against your expenses. It's never gonna look good after year one. Every community is virtually in the red because when you have. The inflation of expenses growing at five, seven percent, your revenues are at three, five percent, there's always going to be a mismatch. And decisions that are gonna have to be weighed as to what gets funded and what gets off the table. But when you have a financial forecast, it's easier to evaluate those choices. It's, it, it makes decisions around wage and collective bargaining simpler, and it make mapping out things like capital planning easier to know that in X year, we'll have available funds to support. Whatever equipment or building renovation might be necessary. The next recommendation is, is sort of a new one for me, but I've had some success in in other communities. I've entered my community to hold quarterly financial briefings. And. This is really centered for me on education. One of the things that I find with particularly select boards and in finance committees. It's, it's rare that they come together as a group to really delve into the financial management. And the sort of understanding, how do we monitor our community's fiscal health? Where are we being successful? Where are there challenges and opportunities that we should look at? And so we think on a quarterly basis, you know, a presentation by the town ministry or finance director on where we stand on our budget, you know, revenues to date against expenses, but also. You know, what is our reserve to look like? Does our debt picture look like? Are there areas for concern? And I think that's something that you can pivot mid-year to address these things when you're aware of it. And so it's really an educational tool there. And then last is this group of recommendations. You know, we always think it's important, especially with the level of turnover that's happened here. You document those roles and responsibilities. There's new technology that's here. There's new processes that get input in place. You don't have a real deep staff. And so if any one person were to leave, it's really nice to have a cookbook to go to to say, here's the recipe to get payroll out, to make sure invoices get paid. Rather than having somebody to reinvent that when they come on board. And so we think it's important to do that. That is not an easy process to go through. I've done that when I was in my community. But if you pick at it every day and you say, you know, I'm gonna go and this is how I put the warrant together, and you document that as you're going through and doing it. You know, over the course of the year, you're gonna have yourself a procedures manual. And we think that adds a lot of value, especially to hand off to sort of that next generation that's gonna take on the office. So, so those are the two core areas of recommendations I wanted to cover. Obviously, there, you know, there's eighteen recommendations in there, but. You know, I wanted to really delve into the report to the extent that you folks had questions. So I wanted to open up to you.
Thank you very much for that. For that summary. Oh, Mike, you had a question that you wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start with that. Well, actually, the, for the first question I had, do you reference peer communities throughout the document? I'm curious, if you have any best practices, any communities you could reference against these recommendations, we could reach out to, have discussions with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to put together the list of peer communities that I always benchmark from. Absolutely.
It's those, so you're suggesting some structural changes for our town government. If you know of other communities that have gone through these types of changes, I'd love to be able to reach out to them, speak to them, and understand what their challenges.
Oh, I would wholeheartedly encourage you to do that. Yeah.
I just need to know who they are.
Yeah. Absolutely. I'm willing to put that list together. You know, it's, it's really based on budgets, populations, demographic wealth. You know, it's it's really based on budgets, populations, demographic wealth. But also other things, as stupid as it sounds, road mileage, because that matters when you're talking about D P W. Now, this is a generic peer list that I would benchmark. There are any number of peer lists that you can develop depending on what you're looking at. So if you're looking at a particular function or a particular service, you want to make sure that you tailor that peer list relative to that.
So e- even just an example, different going for creating a town charter. If there is a local municipality that's recently gone through that work, just understand that process, what their their challenges were. Doesn't even have to be a similar appear per se. But you have a number of recommendations where if there's a real life example out there, we can actually connect with. Absolutely. You've you've got some very specific generic changes in terms of codifying, you know, job descriptions to bylaws as an example. So then that whole process, those what what did the municipality like? What do they find beneficial? These would be all things we'd want to know when we make the decision on which which of these you want to execute on.
Okay, the question of, you know, you're making the recommendations, you're making the presentation in other communities. What's the timeframe been for to go from this report to actually implementing those recommendations? What do you think it should? How long do you think it should take us to to get this done?
So, you know, that really varies. So it's 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 hard to define. But what I would say is this. You need to develop a plan around how to implement these recommendations. And one, you know, where I've where I've seen communities be really successful is they pull together a cross section team from town hall. You know, residents as well, who have a vested interest in this. They they outline what the recommendations are, what resources are necessary, identifying the resources that are necessary to implement those recommendations. Who identifying the person who is responsible for implementing that or team of individuals responsible for implementing that recommendation? And then developing that timeline. So, you know, some of these recommendations are, I'll say relatively low hanging fruit that we would expect to get done in a fiscal year. But other things can take a decade. They don't happen overnight. A town implementing a town charter, you know, altogether, that's probably a five, seven year process. And it involves a lot of people, but you need to begin with a blueprint, really. And so that's what we recommend. And we have models for that that I can share. Yeah, to outline that. Yeah.
When we started. Yep, just some, do you provide facilitation resources or project manual? When you say that, just.
So I I wish we had the bandwidth to provide that level, but unfortunately we don't.
So I mean, I asked the question, is C M R P C is assisting us with master plan implementation, Lonnie, right? So there's a whole framework there for maybe we probably need to bring these things together because some similarities that you see in this study with the master plans recommending.
Absolutely. And with the, you know, with C M R P C, maybe we need to leverage now. Again, it's not, there's a cost associated with that, right? We look at outside party to assist.
Well, just yeah, this type of change requires really strong facilitation, bring all these parties together. So somebody who has that skill sets probably something we want to look for, whether it's local or consultant.
Yeah, and and I think it would be a really meaningful investment to do that because it would really streamline the process to that degree. Yeah.
Right. Well, I think that's an awful lot for one night. Well, first to digest. Do you have another?
Yeah, well, I got a few, but I can take some of these in writing if that makes it easier.
You'll email me?
Is that an email?
That's fine. Yeah.
But I'm just kind of just for.
We still have 10 minutes.
Right. Oh, I get that. Lower. We skipped over your.
All right. Does anybody else have any? I don't have no already had this time. I took your first one, so I don't know if you have any others.
I have some pretty in the weeds questions that might be better suited by with an email.
Yeah, I guess just I can draw a week questions by email. That's what I. But for the for the general, for the audience, when you're talking, you do speak a lot about creating new bylaws. And my question is, so we've got job descriptions and you're suggesting bylaws. My sense is that's more from a stability. So if board turns over, you've got that stability. Do you feel that the job descriptions asked they are adequate? Or do we actually need to look at the job descriptions and you you know what I mean? So is it just stability for long term or do we have some gaps?
So I don't know that it's actually that I would say it's my responsibility to pass judgment on whether your job description is adequate. You know, it's it's a question of is it adequate for you as the board? This individual is serving as your chief administrative officer. I'm looking at it from is creating that stability. I know the board is.
As you describe it, I see things in the job description. So I say to myself, okay, we seem to be on the right track.
Yeah.
If the focus is stability long term, I understand the focus. I just want to make sure everybody else understands that. You may not be as familiar with job descriptions.
Yeah, and and to your point about other peers, there are a number of communities that have these types of bylaws. Be happy to provide Kim, the chairman, with what those bylaws are so that you have a roadmap.
Okay, fair. Okay, two quick ones. One, what is the unreserved, undesignated fund balance I see on our portal, our dashboard? What makes what comprises that?
Uh, which page you look?
No, it's not the study. It's your it's your new data.
Visualization?
Yeah, I don't know what's on that chart, but it's a big number.
So the B O A representative is not at this meeting, and I think that's more of.
I'll put that one in writing, please. Yeah.
Okay. I wish I I knew it off the top of my head, but.
In terms of the study, where, why, what was thinking behind averages versus medians when you put your data together?
The front page there.
It actually the average tax bill versus the median.
So we we measure things by average tax bills. I I pull.
Yeah, let me let me handle this. So the way that the reporting comes in for assessment, all the single families together, we do not have individual assessments. So determining whether median, we we don't, the assessor can do that locally.
Right.
We didn't have that data set for the whole state. So average is something that we've been working on. At some point, hopefully we have median. It's definitely a better indicator, but.
I understand the, when you're presenting them on the same page, one's a median, one's an average, you potentially could draw infer some wrong conclusions.
Sure.
Correct. Absolutely.
One last question, I thought the last one, and this has nothing to do with the study. Is there an objective measure? I'm thinking about school funding right now that D L S uses done for peer communities. Is it is it, you know, teacher student ratio? Is it dollars per student? Do you get any of that? Or is that something I should put in writing?
We we do not involve ourselves in what level of funding a town should be contributing for education.
Objective measure for comparison first, purposes, what I'm trying to understand.
And school districts?
Yeah.
I think the Desi site has a bunch of metrics that I would probably use depending on I would, yeah. We we don't have all those metrics, but I know Jesse does maintain a bunch of different comparison metrics I would encourage.
You do touch on it in your study. You do go into enrollment, funding, and ours does a crisscross. So I was kind of, that's more water finding its own level when I look at that chart, but I wasn't sure what you were driving towards with that page. So. That's why I asked. I'm good. Thank you. And this was a great study. This is very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. So aggregating question in general, do you want to have one email blast over of aggregated questions, anything from this board or the finance committee or to reach out in mutual?
Yeah, I mean, for me, it would be easier if you panel with the town administrator to me, and then I'd be happy to respond to those questions. Yeah.
Any other members of either board, anybody, you know, the finance committee members on the and remotely that. I know the lot to digest.
Just in in closing, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it was an absolute pleasure working with this community. We don't always get the level of cooperation and the information that we seek as part of these reviews. It was easy to do that. And so I just want to pass along the appreciation. You know, I work with local officials every day. They are working extremely hard for this community to make sure it's successful. Public doesn't always recognize that. I see it on a day to day level. People are invested in making this community successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just somebody from congressman's offices on the on the remote, maybe not yet because it hasn't started, but I want to recognize State Director Brian Murray, thank you for attending. And at this moment, I'd ask Doug, Dr. Patrick, if you please come up and we'll a couple of minutes early, we'll go into the B V T budget review. Are you going to share the budget?
Not there. So if you've got it.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. Good to be.
Budget season?
I know there's a lot of questions raised about transition of staff, but I'm making my 30 second presentation. It's interesting that we work closely with Representative Murray. In fact, his office staff and and my my folks were in touch earlier this week relative to going into things, and that's not unusual relative to mental health centers and many other activities. Work with Ken O'Brien, okay, in his former role here, his current role in Uxbridge, and also with the voice call activities. And certainly worked with Kim, right, throughout the year as providing information. I'd like to compliment you on reaching out to the Department of Revenue, taking advantage of the local services and others that are available. It's a great research technique to to get an example of what's happening in the other 350 cities and towns and also to look at yourself. If there's anything we can do to help in that process, we'd be glad to assist. To compliment, say thank you to our local school committee representative, Ed Prey, who's been reactive since his election in our in our process. Have a few things for you. I trusted you recognized that the governor's numbers just came out last week. I will give the governor credit for indicating that while it was somewhat later than the previous governor in January distributions, that it was ahead of the timetable, which was today that originally was produced. As we monitored things today, we saw no changes in what the governor put out. We recognize the process as a multi-tier process, as do you, and that it will now go to the legislature to to see what happens. We remain optimistic with representatives like the the one you have that do be every effort to enhance and reduce or subtract from the plans we have in place. When you have those, I'll get through that document. And I'll do my best to describe it for those who are not present. This is a preliminary document. It does have the detail that the, once the budget is fully put together, that we make available to you. Certainly wanted to honor your invitation to me to be here tonight. So I'm hushed for everything we know. I do think we have numbers that are finalized, okay? But we will be providing you with more detailed information as it becomes available to us. The first thing is, in typical fashion, our own students have put together, okay, through our multimedia program. The students do this as kind of portfolios and interesting way to expand. The budget subcommittee is listed in the next page as you turn through it. It's a cross representation of school committee representative. And the uniqueness of the Lockston Valley Tech partnership is you have 12 other towns that are on who share in the expenses responsibilities. And so the independent treasurer, as well as the business manager, others are listed here. Moving on, you'll find my standard letter, which summarizes the primary changes for the next fiscal year. And in that letter, I talked about their view share and the success of the system. It has continued to receive accolades from the state for remarkable scores and M CAS for completion rates and many other things. While the state of Massachusetts has a 4.2% reduction in students in many areas, school systems have witnessed a substantial reduction in students. We have 830 applicants for next year alone. So the interest in coming to us continues to be robust. We only recruit students from the district. We don't sell seats. As we formulated and negotiated various aspects, the letter talks about, we were pleased to see that the health benefit cost went up 2%. We work closely with an insurance broker and certainly benefit from, you know, respectful relationships, wellness techniques and variety of other things, but they're referenced here. The we have negotiated a new transportation contract for five years. So that's a known. We're currently in the third year of the teacher's contract and negotiating a new. So it has the results of the F Y 24 first year impact. I hope I remain optimistic that the contract will be cost sensitive and reasonable. We often approach rate approach collective bargaining with a goal of everybody being a little unhappy with the with the ending. Okay, from school committee to the teachers association. We recognize the success of the school system is is directly attributable to the total contributions of our teachers, our aides, and so many others. The letter also makes you aware, just as the local service people just suggested, of the likelihood of making a request of a new bond next year. Okay, to improve the facility. The superintendent is older than the building, but it's pretty close. So that the we take great care. I know Mike is among those who was toward. Lonnie has is another one who was taught and and other members of our finance committee previously have thought. I'll be glad to extend it toward anyone who wants to see the investment and how we take care of it. We recognize it's a privilege to have the commitment that the public has made. And between the help of our students, custodians and everybody else, we we treat it with respect. Nevertheless, it's still 60 years old. And so it is only fair and prudent to plan on a modest bond request to be extended to you next year. No numbers have been offered. You have noticed, and Kim certainly has noticed, that we're in the the F Y 24 nears the conclusion of the current bond. Okay, two years left. Okay, so it's all it's almost done. The the that bond with a $36 million bond 18, 20 years ago, we we financed after 10 years, which we were able to do to secure a much lesser rate. And in the in any case, it's almost paid off, right? And so I'm envisioning a request, something of the magnitude of $18 million. That's very premature to give you a number, but just to say, wait a minute, what are you looking at? We're not looking at a new school. We're not looking at a 300 or 400 million dollar type change. Okay, that would not be my recommendation. With the with resources we have, technical and otherwise, construction technology, electrical, A H V A C, you name it. And I think we can make a reasonable, let's say enhancements, repairs to best protect the investment you've already made. And so, but nevertheless, that'll go forth. So that's that is not going forth for F Y 24. It's it's a year away. So it's a year notice of the likelihood of a request of that nature. The next page is the budget building process, all right, which shows the multiple multiple process is very transparent relative to the way we build our budget and a public hearing, which is scheduled for the 23rd of this month. Right? Adjustments were made as you did, relative to the governor's plan to not to release information to the third week of January. So everything shifted. We've been in touch with all 13 towns. In most cases, it's with a combination of the town administrators who have established professional relationships. They know us, we know them. And also at least the chair of funding committees in most cases. We provide best guess forecasting to them and do our best to avoid any surprises. Okay? Moving on, the the return on investment, we like to point out that as a vocational technical school, we have a rare opportunity to do things others do not, okay? Whether it's working with Satino and his resources outside with the technology. Our own students can do installations. We can do upgrades. We can do lots of things that others do not. But that's true of 18 different vocational technical programs. So we we do our best to make changes and make improvements, not to endanger any students, not to put anybody out of job, but to maximize the resource and learning opportunities, say, at the same time. We also recognize that a non-vocational technical school would not be able to do that, so in fairness. And you see a summary. On the left-hand side of the return on investment, you see a sample comment from the town administrator in Uxbridge, who I believe is the longest-serving town administrator, now that others have retired or moved on. And so he's, it's an example of working with Kim's colleague there. Moving on, you see the all-inclusive one-time request. City, we are not a town department, okay? We have no ability to pass on other expenses as town might be able to do. We're not jealous of that. We just distinguish it from the way we do it. Our package, within my 32 years, we've made one request. We've never changed it. And when the state underfunded us by 1.8 million, 2008, because you ate the reduction, we ate the reduction, so we, the requests, the predictions we make about state aid and the amounts that are included and everything else, including the assessments that I'll share, I have a single financial page for, that'll be the conclusion of my remarks, will be, will not change, okay? We'll live with it because the only way that 13 different partners can plan is not to have that be a changing number. And if you notice on the all-inclusive report, below the report is a sample of our own students and staff making improvements in our 60-year-old building, and this is the way we do it, okay? The next page is the listing of grants and donations. The listing of the grants and donations is a snapshot in time. It lists $2.3 million in grants that were, have been awarded so far. As I speak to you tonight, we have submitted a grant for capital skills for $153,000. We are negotiating with a foundation from Boston that has agreed to come back to meet with us and tour a second time at the end of the month, on the 28th, a $400,000 request. We have worked with Selfridge Milton for another $90,000 request. In any case, in my letter, I predicted that when the final budget is advanced, there'll be at least $3 million in additional grants and support. Once again, we're able to do that because we can show matching efforts. We can show work and improvements we can do ourselves. We can stretch it up. We try to take advantage of that. And the only way the grants would be extended to us is if we continue to receive the support from you and the other 12 towns to show there's a matching effort. If the communities that make the assessment portion of our budget refuse or reluctant to make, then why would anyone extend additional money? We like and encourage you to look at this as outside the standard role and responsibility, over and above it, but we're delighted to do it, and to chase down matching dollars that enhance and kind of complement the investment that we ask you to make. The next thing is BBT in the news. It talks about some of the summaries of the programs. It's always a challenge to respond to the informational needs and community information of 13 different towns and the number of newspapers and media outlets that are all part of that. And we try our damnedest to do that. Obviously, we're based in one community, your colleague from Upton, but we feel that we're a member of all 13 towns and do our damnedest to show respect and cooperation. The next thing you have, you have some samples of some of the projects that are being done in Manhattan. The first one is, in typical fashion of the partnership, and respect behold to the sister school system, which is right across the street from us, okay? Have that communication? Yeah, okay, it's in memo form, and there's a picture of some of the projects on the back, right? So this is work being done at an estimated cost savings of, that's listed here, who assists in the wheelchair ramp that they use to access that building. It's just used as an example. The next example I have for you is the Roger Wood Post remodeling effort, okay? Once again, there's a memo and a series of photos that show some of the pictures that is our form of giving back to the community. It's my understanding that we're currently also having conversations with the fire chief relative to doing some electrical work. So that's another department. That's another way to give back. I would emphasize that these projects are selected because they're good learning, because they're safe. They're not, nobody's on a, you know, steeple or something of that nature. No one's endangered, and it's helpful to the community as a cost-saving measure. It's a nice way to give back. The, we recently received communications from the state that the Millard Hospital that's based in our building, which adds to the mental health services that we provide to the students, Menden and the other students, were renewed for 10 years at $150,000 per year, as of the example. Are there any questions so far? Can you tell me what it is? Here's a one-page financial sheet that I want to walk through because usually that's the crux of your interest. And just let us know if anything else is needed, we'll provide it. If I may, this was prepared for you for tonight, okay? The first thing is, the state has come out with the, as I see, with the FY '24 preliminary, with the expectation not to change, minimum obligation, which is the second box there. The $1,234,657, it's a number that you would have seen as well, if you followed the state, and I'm not surprised that you would have done that. For comparison purposes, I looked at the year prior, okay, and you see that listed. What's the increase in the state's calculation of the absolute minimum, and that's a total of $250,420. With me so far? All right, so however, what's the total new assessment anticipated from your vocational technical school? The total new assessment is expected to be, and is planned to be, and is expected to change, to be an increase of $266,782, right? The debt was provided on a long-term schedule. As I say, it's nearing its end, and that's also listed. Let's, I would point out to you that 77% of the increased assessment that we're making, that's the $266,000, is attributable to the state's calculation and not to Blackstone Valley Tech. Most people are aware that before 1993, that a regional system assessed each of its partner towns at the exact same level. But in 1993, the state passed legislation to address court challenges about the fact that not each of the 351 communities had the same wealth value. So the state now does calculations on the base of total property values and the income levels departed, reported to the Department of Revenue by the community. Those two factors drive an opportunity to pay. The state does this calculation, not only those, a few other things. Those are the primary ingredients, and then arrives at the number which attracted the $200, $220 increase. Okay, so a couple of observations on this. Menden enrollment within, with us grew to 85 enrollees, okay, from 77 to 85. Although it's never completely clear exactly what the impact of additional students will bring, what I've always done is notified the town administrator, as I did here, of a community that sees a substantial change. I'll call it six more students. At least, it's a first heads up. It is, you know, like BP, that the state will come up with a calculation of increase, and so will we. One thing that is interesting is Menden's debt ownership, which was established 18, 20 years ago, was based on a three-year enrollment average at that time, which is a little different formula, right? And the debt is 2.6, but your current participation rate is 6.8. So that's a good thing for a town that's in your situation. It means the others kind of paying the rent bill and your occupancy. So I can't use that everywhere because in some cases, it's not, it's a little different, okay? One of the observations we made relative to the governor's plan is that the non-urban schools in Massachusetts did not, have yet to receive a major change in state revenue planning under the Student Opportunity Act. We don't begrudge the urbans, but the urban systems have a significant need and have been quite successful in lobbying with the state to have substantial increased subsidies from the state in the next implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Most school systems in this area will receive $30 per student and only 30. That's been a an unhappy development, okay, in many
Very aware of that. We're very aware of that.
Yes, I would not be surprised. We, as your vocational technical school, there's two things that drove us into a different category. One is the increased number of students who fell into the economically disadvantaged, was a substantial change, and also because we operate under Chapter 74, which is the higher standards for vocational technical education. In any case, we'll receive almost $700,000 more in state aid, which is a big help to offsetting some of the investments. Technically, it's about 600, it's 600 plus for the base Chapter 70, and another 50,000 to 60,000 in regional transportation. Right now, the regional trans, fortunately, both school systems will enjoy the regional transportation. The regional transportation initial projection is closer to 75%, but the media and governor releases and others continue to reference that it's expected to be at 90%. We haven't seen a 90% number yet. We actually put in the exact number that they did, right? So we have never played possum with you relative to lowballing that. We just do our best to predict it and then plan for it. If it's less than we predict, we live with it. If it's greater, well, it's going to roll over to excess and deficiency in the use, you know, in a future way. In this cycle, we drew upon our reserve, E and D is just the terminology for excess and deficiency, the equivalent of free cash for municipality. We drew upon $100,000 to reduce the assessment, to view where inquiries have been made, whether or not we'll choose revenue, do not. We don't leave seeds open to sell them for choice, okay, because of the interest incoming. That's my summary report.
And really have any questions for Dr. Fitzpatrick at this point?
I plan on ending your town meeting, as I have every year. I don't mind you wanting to follow-up questions if they occur or surface. This is the first of the finance committee presentations, the pilgrimage, you know, kind of thing. I kid people that I feel like a priest, a minister, a rabbi, because I'm out with hands open. It's a great story to tell you. I hope you're proud of that system because it's really something to behold. It's an honor to be associated with it.
I can't say enough, but my staff is over 50% ValleyTech graduates.
There's some confusion by some, really say that, well, kids are going to college. Industry constantly recruits kids to industry by offering paid tuition to colleges now. It's like the military of years ago. Nobody goes to college for a living, okay, but most people in industry, regardless of the industry, want people to continue to learn, okay? And so the placement is unlimited. I call it a gateway opportunity for students. Nobody restricts what they can do. When I first started, I think they gave out $20,000 in scholarships. Last year, we gave out $8 million in scholarships. Okay, some cases, those are renewable, you know, based on performance by a student. But, you know, talk about, the world is an oyster. I'm saying, if I had high school students, I don't, I would have them in that building if I could.
Dr. Fitz, before you close on 100%, can you talk about the career signing data that we've talked about college?
Right.
Because it's a new thing and it's huge.
Yeah, thank you. What Lonnie makes reference to is, an honor to honor the respect we have for the trades. Instead of just honoring students who are up to an athletic scholarship or other, we started having industry signings, okay? Where people came in and it was really kind of interesting, from different companies throughout eastern Massachusetts, and did a signing, including oftentimes bonuses, put it on a little higher, but no, just bonuses
Never changes.
Who accepted employment within those companies. Again, it's getting more attractive, you know, offering incentives.
Just actually one point, Kim, are these numbers currently baked into our current tracking? Okay.
They are, they are as of the Senate.
Yeah, we, we, we're not able to send ours before they just came about.
I didn't see the, thank you for sending the spreadsheet. You did save that in the file, but it's empty.
Yeah, I mean, in fairness, okay, so the game's just beginning, if you will.
I understand. As one of, having seen what's out there, as one understand now, right? Just more keeping it fluid in my own head.
But the soonest anyone here would have noticed any impact at all, it was last, middle of last week, when I stayed short that first number. That's correct.
Right.
All right, so, and that's when we got it, that's when you could access.
That's when I saw it.
Yeah, and I figured you did, yeah.
Information, yay!
Yeah, I know, critical.
Representative Murray at the spot, but you hear anything about the Chapter 90 money? I'm sorry, the transportation money?
Yeah.
Not specifically, we're just starting the budget process. Other than what's in the government budget.
Yeah, I just also want to echo Lonnie's comments. It's a great program. My daughter's graduate. She's moved on, graduated from college, out of the house, so she's, that's good for me, great.
Well, I think it has to answer the audience. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Joyce's contribution to our nursing program, okay? It's nice, I love it. It's nice to be home, relative to making presentations and interacting. I grew up in Milford and spent a lot of time in Menden, so.
And I can tell you, I mean, I'm a ValleyTech graduate, went on to yes, to college, and actually have to speak to you because I work for Tesla these days, and you could talk to your own people.
And you've been an ally for the Eagle Scout programs as well.
That's very true, and another Eagle, and actually Ken O'Brien. Last, Ken O'Brien's the real.
Now, the general optimism and the associations which you affiliated, that the legislature will be successful in enhancing the degree possible, relative, you know, some of well, frankly, Joyce telling you so much.
You'd be surprised.
Okay.
Well, Doctor, thank you very much. Sure. Thanks for your Hi, Jack.
Hi. So.
And this
It's cutting out.
Fire, there's damn going on.
Now I hear it.
Yeah.
Hold on, everyone.
We, yeah. Yeah, we just, please, feel, come up and take a seat.
That's much better. Was.
All right, do you want to take a seat up here too? Right here in the end, if you want, or wherever you want to sit. Thanks very much. I was waiting for this to reload.
Just let me know, and I'll, I can do a little intro for Just let me know and I'll, I can do a little intro for you, Mr. Chair.
Just waiting for the main computer to reboot.
Okay.
Are you still on the meeting mic?
Yes.
If they can hear.
Is this, if, if.
I say if they can hear us.
Yeah, someone, we're waiting for a second for the fincom to.
Nick, are you, can you come off mute?
Now I see it.
What do you need, Mike?
Yeah, Nick, I make a motion to close the fincom meeting.
Second.
You do it, Nick.
Yeah.
Nick, would you like to say?
Lonnie, she, Lonnie.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? See, enter, aye.
Jack, good.
And I just want to also recognize that besides. I had to represent it, we have someone from Congressman Jake Oshinplus's office, Dana. Is present. His chief of staff, there she is, Dana Hanson.
Hi, folks.
Also presented.
Hello.
We met Dana and, and the congressman two weeks ago when they came to town and did a little, took a little historic district tour and. Gave me the opportunity to, to talk to Dana about the earmark process and looking for. Federal infrastructure money that might be able to help us with the next phase of this. So I invited them to come and listen to your presentation. So for that, I would ask you to introduce yourselves and walk us through it.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone. I was gonna say, Jack, I think Jack wants to maybe start.
Sure, sorry, Jack. I just thought I'd, I'd kind of give the newer members, I know Mike and Lonnie have been through the, since the beginning of this. But I got to Mendon about a year and a half ago, a little more than that. And I, I think it was probably my first day on the job, I started hearing about the need. And the lack of public infrastructure for a whole host of things, mostly economic development, but. Coincidentally, for affordable housing and even for protecting some of the environment. So, you know, and I heard a lot of stories about where water might be and might not be about. Towns making deals with Mendon and back. Kind of backing out of them and on and on. And so I made it a priority, working with, well, now Chairman Maroli. To try to get monies to, you know, kind of really take a good analytical look. Of what we have, what's possible, and where can we go with what we find? And we were fortunate enough back in the fall of twenty twenty-one, maybe a little later than that. Through Representative Murray's office and Chairman Maroli to get an earmark of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we immediately turned that into a scope of services, put them out to bid. And as you know, Mike and Lonnie, you interviewed two firms and we were lucky enough to. To hire Woodward and Curran. And we've been working with them and I know even the selectmen have, have had some workshops with them as we went on and on. Trying to dig in to what we have and what's possible. And that's what we termed as phase one, and that's what you're going to hear today. Simultaneously, we realized that regardless of what their, their outcome is going to be and that you're going to hear today. That we needed to go further, regardless of what direction it led us. And we immediately applied for a housing choice grant and we were lucky enough to receive that back in November of twenty-two. For a hundred and fifty thousand for, to do what we thought was phase two. And then low and behold, again, thanks to Representative Murray and, and Chairman Maroli. We received another hundred thousand dollar earmark. And we are considering that phase two and phase two A. And I think at the end of this, you'll hear about that and how we can take what you hear today a step further. I will also say we've been working, it seems almost daily, but it isn't, but at least weekly with Woodward and Curran. We've worked with the water commissioners. Dan Byer's been an unbelievable resource as well as a lot of other people in town. So I just thought it would be good for those in the audience in this newer selectmen to hear a little background about how this started and. I'll leave it up to them to tell their, sorry, oh, one last thing is we also took the liberty and as the selectman, we. Gave a draft of this report to the selectmen and the water commissioners. We were fortunate enough to get three or four comments back or list of comments. We've incorporated them as best as we could. And so it's been a collaborative effort and I'm, I'm happy about that. I think that's the best way to move forward, so that's my little intro.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah, completely agree with what Jack said, it's been a great collaborative effort. And so, good evening, my name's Scott Salvucci, client manager with Woodward and Curran with us tonight. Christopher, the project manager and Zach Aronson, the project engineer. And I think as we get into kind of the overview of what phase one was, the phase one study was. We'll talk through kind of the alternatives that came out of it, the findings. And just talk about those, like Jack was mentioning, kind of some clear objectives to maintain momentum and really maximize the funding that. Is coming down the pipeline in kind of this second phase. And so as Jack mentioned too, we had a great workshop with, with everyone in the fall or with most of you in the fall. And we took a lot of that input and used that to help our phased approach, prioritize areas to really kind of make this an achievable. And implementable plan as much as possible that we'll get into here. So looking forward to talking about it and I think, you know, we can get into the presentation right away, but if, if any of you want any comments before we do. We'll open it up to you as well. So.
Great, then jump right in.
I'll start us off, it's great seeing everybody again. You know, September felt like just a little bit, you know, a while, but it was just a little bit ago, so it's. You know, we've done a lot of work and then so we're really happy to be able to share that with you guys. So the agenda for today's presentation is to go over, you know, back in, in the fall, we kind of took. Wanted to present everything, it was like almost a progress report, where, where we, where we were at. How, how the alternatives are being developed and what sort of conditions we were culminating as part of that. Now we're at the point where, you know, we developed the report, which culminates everything from that fall meeting and also. Culminates the additional work, which included the final water source and wastewater alternatives development. The recommended path forward and then an implementation plan. Well, that's what's on today's agenda is going through the actual results that came out of all the alternative development. So the water source is the first one we're going to go over. So we have four alternatives that were developed as part, as part of a water sourcing location. Inclusive to every single one of these potential alternatives is a well site. A treatment building, a storage tank and the distribution. And from the feedback that we received back the fall, we clarified that the areas that are highest priority, we segmented it out to a few areas, but. Based on some of the initial flow, flow numbers, we kind of worked on. Really serving the areas, priority areas, one and two as defined on the screen, but is route sixteen, route one forty and the connecting area in between. You know, running up Bellingham Street, he's Providence Ave and up to Route sixteen. So alternative one is a well site just north of Providence Street and Hartford Avenue East. Alternative two is just north of Thayer Road, sort of near. The, the waterway there and then alternative three is just, is in the southern end of Mendon, near the Blackstone border. And then alternative four is no action. Sorry, a little bit technical. So alternative one is presented on the screen now. All these figures and everything I'm going to go through for each alternative is within the, the report. I hope you guys have a chance to look through, if not, you know, take any questions on it. But generally, this, like I said, each, each one of these maps you're going to see are show the, the alternative location, a parcel. Where, where we are having the well site and where we are planning on putting storage. It shows the existing infrastructure and it shows proposed infrastructure. So this well site is located, like I said, just north of East Providence and East Hartford Ave. And it's on a town owned parcel. In, in a lower yield aquifer that's considered, that's a con. But in general, it's a great location for potential water source development. Some pros and cons are listed on the screen here. I'm not, not spend too much time on them because like, as I said, this, these are things that were included in the report. Just for your information and also there's a capital and O and M cost, and it costs us represented for each one of these. Alternatives which looked at construction, engineering, land acquisition, O and M. And, and total lifecycle cost, then provided, you know, cost of the. So. The alternative two is a well site location just north of Thayer Road and then privately in parcel where there's a pocket of high yield aquifer. When I see, say, high yield aquifer, I'm referring to the Masti groundwater aquifer layers that are pulled from the US. USGS survey where they, they went and actually delineated a lot of these, these areas over, over the years. There's a pocket in this location, it is on a private, privately owned parcel. And would take some development in terms of roadway access and things like that. But that is another, the second alternative. And again, pros and cons.
Joyce, you have a, if you want to take a seat up here, Joyce, too, there's one more chair, I think, you know, has the board of health.
I'm just wondering. I'm wondering where the Thayer Road one was, is it at the end of the road?
It's just north of Thayer Road. It's, it, Thayer Road is actually, it's a little hard to see, but it's, on the rock next one. It's, it's a little further north, probably, you know, Thayer Road is, if you hear where my cursor is, and the well site location is right here.
Is it near the pipe, the gas pipeline?
No, it's further north than that.
Further north?
Yeah.
That's going to be. Down the, down the far end of, so not up at the Bates Street and into Thayer Road, but down near the other end, I can't tell from the.
Yeah, right, I can pull up, so. Yeah, we can do that. I can, oh, I gotta unshare my screen because right now they're only seeing the, I'm gonna unshare my screen for a sec here. So you guys can see the part two. So this is the parcel where we're looking at right here. Which one, three Bates Street?
There's just a small delay.
Oh, okay. But it's, it's north of Thayer Road in terms of, yeah, roads here, right? So.
So it's basically on.
Down.
Yeah, yeah. So that is where that location is. All right, I'm gonna get us back on.
Beautiful location.
That is the well site. For alternative two. All right. So alternative three is shown, shown now, so it's great. There's actually two locations shown on this map. There's a location for a privately owned parcel and there's also a town owned parcel here. This, this area was looked at because it was heavily documented as probably one of the best areas in Mendon in terms of wa, potential water source. Through multiple studies, previous studies and reports conducted in Mendon and generally the superficial geology. And the ground, or aquifer yield layer showed great pocket of water in this location. Obviously, in terms of the service area, we're looking at the farthest away from the service area, it's funny how that works. But that, that is why this location in terms of, if we had to throw something on mark, we would say this is probably an area where we're seeing. Probably the best potential for a good water source.
Can you zoom in on that?
That's why we have alternative three.
Green area, is that Rover Field?
This is a, this is right at the back of a small subdivision, I can pull that up. It could be. So it's, let me pull this up. Yeah. Sorry, I'm not doing one mouse here. Right along the Mill River.
That's Colonial.
It's right, it's this one right here.
Yeah. Right after Massa Soria Way.
Oh, often, okay, so the east side of the river.
So that's behind all Southwoods.
Right.
Yeah, that's right next door by us.
But that's not.
It's not that far off of the service there, I mean, we're not, we're not.
No, it's not a ton, but it's, it's just in terms of where the other ones. Right, exactly, right. So in terms of, when you're, you're talking about a comparison to the other alternative.
I just believe it was the Blackstone Town Line.
Yeah, exactly, right.
That's all right.
Right, which, which it is fairly close, right? But not, not the end of it. So when, when you look at that, that, that red parcel, that tunnel parcel. That's just south of the one I was just showing you, this one here. That's this one and this is a little further south and close to the Blackstone Mine, but there's a pocket of. High yield aquifer in this, along this parcel as well. But again, where, where the previous studies and reports point to is the location just north and it's in a privately developed parcel. So we're kind of using both of those right now as part of a, you know, future phasing to look at. And it's, you know, we want to identify both because obviously town owned land is more favorable than, you know, reaching out to private developers or private, private.
So can you talk about the one in between, that's, so it's in between Massa Soria and Colonial and where the power lines are?
So the power lines, I believe, are, talking about this one here. Power lines, I believe, are just south, kind of where these. You see these yellow shades are in your, the GIS?
Yeah.
So it's just, the power lines are just south.
Yeah, well, the, the power lines are, this is going to, the power lines right here.
Yep, correct.
And where is the proposed well site?
Uh, so the proposed one's farther north and then this area, this, for alternative three, we're kind of looking at two areas.
Yeah.
Depending on, you know, future phasing, but this, this area is one, the town owned parcel here, Metal Brook Constitution area. And then also it's a little further north. And then also it's a little further north. One with the private parcels, just.
Okay, Alpha Mass Soyway on the inside. Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, and again, so in terms of the cost. Uh, we kind of went through them quickly, but the 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 highest, the lowest cost is alternative one, just cuz it's relative location, not gonna have as much piping that needs to go in. Uh, alternative two is the next. The next lowest and then alternative three is highest cost because we just just due to distribution and transmission piping. That's it. Because a- and most of these are pretty similar, right? Cuz in all the components are fairly similar in what they are going in. It just distribution and transmission piping is the difference in them. So that is the water source alternatives. I'm gonna turn it over to Krista now for some of the.
I just have one question. If you go back to that previous page and you gave the numbers.
Yep.
So is this, i- this number is to. Basically, value sourcing created.
This is to, yeah, this is the full number and we're gonna get into a little later at how how we've. Actually accomplish this and do accomplishable tasks, break it up for more manageable pieces.
I'm just wondering if that number that, does that include? Distributing the water to the. For the intended commercial customer on sixteen and one forty?
Yes, correct. That includes, that includes all the Route sixteen, the corridor in between, uh Route sixteen, Route one forty and the connecting corridor between Bellingham and. The other.
And the costs are just for those specific locations. So when you're talking about distance. Back to the primary objective of the study.
Right.
I'm just curious, do you look? If we're to, i- if that needed to be broadened, would that change any of your thinking about location? Right? So if you were to y- y- go in another direction. So are any of these more?
Well, we had, we had to find, especially Lonnie and I were saying, but we had to find that this was specifically.
Understood, yeah, understood, but I would think that, and I'm not saying we're we're even going there.
Yeah.
Here, it's very specific location, cost to these two areas, as an example, the one forty and sixteen.
Right.
If there was, are any of these more centrally located if you were to. Have a phase three, four, five, or six, and you want to bring all of them ending up on town waters and example, right? I don't know.
So in terms of the well site locations, right, like. Um, we we definitely consider pri- the priority areas as as where we look at, but we also had to keep in mind that. There's not a ton of places to to pu- put holes in the ground, uh, for well, for well source, right? When you, we have to look at sand and gravel walk aquifers per Mast D E P guidelines before we look at. Uh, bedrock aquifers and the the largest source of sand and gravel aquifer right along the Mill River and muddy muddy brook. Uh, and all those areas, as you know, come pretty much from, you know, the northeast side of Mendon and just go straight down to to um. You know, southeast side of it. Um, so when we talk about sourcing. I don't think it would really change depending on the service area. Um, it's just more so. You know, those are the locations. That we had to deal with to get the water where it need to be. So I guess to answer your question, I don't know if those locations would change if you change the service area. I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think.
Question, I would say is is the highest cost actually long term? Give us any of that, right, right?
Right.
And sounds like it's more of moot point. Okay.
I think we'll, we'll know more once we know what's in the ground. That's gonna dictate.
Right. Agreed, yeah.
Scope is to uh kind of do that type of analysis, Mike, to.
Right.
Dive deep into the cost of benefit.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, and we're gonna get more into that in a second. I know it's hard not to like wanna jump on it and. But we are certainly going to cover that piece to scope and what that involves.
Zach, can I, can I just interrupt for one second? I I realize. You know, I'm always thinking about people that are tuning in now and have no idea how we got. To even talk about this. But um we spent months and months of interviewing every abutting town. Every water department and sewer department about a partnership. Um, buying water from them or su- or using sewer uh resources from them. And not surprising, and I know Mike and and Lonnie know this, we didn't get a very good reception. Uh, they were all polite, but it was, you know, we're gonna keep what we got, sorry. There was maybe a little movement from Hope Dale, but even that was. Years and years out. So. The 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 idea of a partnership with another town, though there were many stories about it, doesn't seem to be. Uh, uh, a high priority right now. And then. From the tabletop discussion we have with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and all kinds of boards at one night. We zeroed in on where the rumors and available land is and uh where possible water resources are. So that's where they started looking first and that's how we got to where we're on.
That's a great one, yeah. Uh, th- those were all the the areas we looked at at, um, we tried, you know, looking at neighboring communities and seeing what. How we got here and it eventually led it to a point where where mended sourcing was. The the front we needed to.
History tells us anything about this, it's that they don't wanna do business with us.
Yeah.
Been trying to get us off for you, so if we're gonna do it, let's just do it ourselves like we do everything else. We've tried a million times.
Good point.
Is there a possible impact to residents near the well and their?
So the idea, that's a good question. Uh, the. At this point, we we still need to know what what we're dealing with in terms of. The actual draw from the well before we even make that sort of determination.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, that's something we can certainly look back to, uh, once we, once we go through that.
With my proximity to uh. I'm very glad that I stuck around.
Yeah.
Uh, cuz my wealth works quickly and I don't want that to change.
Yeah, it it's a definitely dependent on what the actual conditions are.
Yeah.
When we start going.
All right, so moving on to the wastewater alternatives. So similarly, we evaluated some alternatives for sewer collection in town. Um, so all the alter- both alternatives that we evaluated include. Um, providing sewer in those priority areas, Route sixteen, Route one forty and the connection. We also included the homes around Muk Pond because we know they're on tight tanks. Um, and both of these alternatives are assuming three pop- free compensation, kind of an assumption, but similar between the alternatives. Alternative one is a new wastewater treatment facility in town in Mendon. And alternative two is connecting to Hope Dale's wastewater treatment facility, which is located right off Route sixteen. And uh, three is no action or do nothing. Um. There we go. Uh, so uh, alternative one is a treatment facility in town. Don't focus too much on the location. I put the location on the map to show you that we looked at. Parcel that had sufficient acreage for a treatment facility and disposal system, so. Um, you know, certainly if this was an alternative that the town wanted to move forward with, we would take a closer look at where the facility would be located. Uh, but we needed a facility, we needed um land uh that could both house the wastewater treatment facility and also. A groundwater discharge system, um, which takes up takes up some land as well, so um. For the purpose of this evaluation, we um, we have a location north of Route sixteen on North Ave. Um, which had sufficient um, sufficient. Uh, space and what those are undeveloped parcels. So again, building a treatment facility in town. Um, and and discharging groundwater discharge in Massachusetts, you can no longer. Um, and no new uh communities can discharge to a surface uh surface water discharge. So from here on out, it's all discharged. Uh, uh groundwater.
Wow.
Um.
So is the, but but we could still tie into an existing one. Or or across the state.
Correct.
Okay.
But but there's a caveat to that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so also, um, pros and cons to having a treatment facility. I mean, the biggest advantage is control. The town amended would have control over rates and would be able to, you know, think about future expansion and and um. Yeah, with come responsibility, obviously, and responsibility for maintaining and operating a wastewater utility and a treatment facility is. Is a lot, is a lot. And with that comes a really high cost. Um, so this uh, the cost that we have here are are preliminary, but um. It's really not an economical option. If there are other options to pursue with Hope Dale, it's. Preferred over building a plant in Mendon, just doesn't make sense for um, the area and the, yeah, that we're talking about here, it's. Excited, so. So alternative two, like I said, is um, the same servicing same area, but sending sewer. Are sending wastewater to Hope Dale's wastewater treatment facility. Um. We need, definitely need to do further evaluation. Um, if the town chooses to pursue this more. To work with Hope Dale and really understand how much capacity they have at at that plant. We've had a couple conversations with. Um, with Hope Dale and they've indicated they have um extensive inflow and infiltration, which is. Um, basically their plant is maxed out with of um, with their, well, uh, basically. Uh, reaching their their permit limit because of I I. And if they can room, if they can find the sources of inflow and infiltration, that flow will go down and they'll have capacity for. Um, a potential connection.
So they've got seepage or leaks.
Yeah, or rainwater coming in somewhere.
Yeah.
Some pumps.
Things that aren't wastewater flow. Taking up space in their treatment.
Leader connections, those types of things that when it rains is when they, during dry weather, not that, but what they've indicated is during rain events.
Which is very common.
Which are super common for everyone, Massachusetts communities. New England communities, I should say.
So to to your question, um, right now, Hope Dale has a has a surface water discharge. Uh, assuming um, they can take additional flow and was still within their current permit. Everything is good, but if that, if 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 this additional flow requires Hope Dale to increase their permit. Uh, discharge. That would require. Ground or they would have to have, they would have anything over their current limit. Yeah. Yeah.
So. In that case, is there a sufficient? Land area where they are to add that piece in? And would that fall under our development piece?
Um, so we. We didn't look at that yet. We did not look at that yet. Um, we have a a general idea of the the current. Capacity at their plant, but we definitely need um. To dive in a little deeper. And and the numbers that I'm gonna show you here are assuming that there is no additional groundwater discharge that is needed in Hope Dale. So that idea is we accounted for some costs, help them reduce their inflow and infiltration, so seal the pipes. Um, find those uh illegal connections, uh.
Things like stormwater management. Tie into that.
It, that's part of it, that's part of the inflow, however, the infiltration parts, the leaks and the cracks and the things, so, so it's one. Fifty percent of it potentially.
And as you can see, it's still expensive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's still ver- yes, it's still, it's still very expensive and.
I was just gonna say, the the difference is thirty three million dollars. When you're, when you're up in those numbers.
Yeah, what's the difference?
If you lop off the.
Yeah.
First couple of sections here, you know, you. And we have control, it it's, I don't know.
Well, but.
I mean, it still might be a pipe for you, but.
Yeah, but keep in mind, we talked about this during our meetings. The more communities that are involved, potentially jointly on a project, the more opportunities we have for funding that open up. And so. Even if it doesn't look directly like is a benefit, it actually is funding wise when it benefits multiple communities.
Oh, I get it, so we can, yeah.
And we did a very preliminary betterment cost per connection um for both of these alternatives and. Um, the cost per connection is between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per connection. Now that is very preliminary. Um, but it it's.
We should be able to pass this at town meeting. Joyce gets one since she's on the corner. Do you get two of those down in Smokey Street?
So I guess just to summarize where we are right now, um, both from the drinking water alternatives and the wastewater. So for drinking one, what we're proposing um is. You know, we looked at, we have potential well sites, but we really need to understand what's in the ground, what's the quality of the water and how much water is there. Uh, so the next phase of this is is a test well program where we actually find some of that information out. Um, so we're looking, we're proposing to look at each of those three alternatives um that Zach went went through to those locations. And see and see, you know, what kind of actual yield there is and and also look at water quality.
I know I joked about the betterment fee, but that betterment fee is if we had no funding. If we decided to pay.
Correct. Correct.
Between. We're gonna get it fully funded, so.
Yes, and for and for wastewater, based on the the cost that we're, these are again preliminary costs, but based on this, we're recommending. Uh, no action, and if you want to pursue.
Okay.
Um. The discussions with Hope Dale, let's let's under, fully understand um the capacity that they have at their plant. Um, and and like you said, bring that, we, that number needs to come down, obviously, significantly.
And and again, if if funding, based on what Kim was saying, if funding is better with a community effort and they can get better. Because then we can get better because of it, but now it's. I was right, and that's just mine.
Hope Dale Amendment is in the same congressional district. Just saying.
I heard that, I'm still listening.
I, I was hoping you'd work.
Did you hear the part about fully funded?
So what we are, um, what we've laid out here is just kind of a phase approach moving forward. Um, phase one is this project that we just completed now, this preliminary evaluation of the alternatives. What we're proposing for phase two is that test well program. Um, and should the town be interested in starting those discussions with Hope Dale on the wastewater um side of things as well, that could be part of phase two. Um, after phase two, we hope to have an idea of how much water's in the ground, the quality of that water, and we will be able to fine tune the. The product costs associated um and where we think the best location or locations for wells could be. And based on that, um, we put together some kind of a breakout of potential. Um, design and construction projects, so it's not all happening at once. Um, but that you're building the well and the treatment first and 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 then you're built, um, you know, you're. Kind of building your distribution out over a phased uh over over, you know, in twenty year, whatever, whatever that um time thing looks like, so. Um.
Uh, just to jump in, um, this this phased approach how we're currently showing it. Really is heavily dependent, especially three A and three B being split out with that, cuz we're showing basically uh. The the storage tank being built. After we do the well site and uh treatment building. Really heavily dependent on on what we we see flows part of phase two, so I just wanna make that. Clear, um, but what it's designed to do is show manageable. Steps in completing the project and the the greater project, right? Uh, based on serving priority areas one and two. Uh, so we we have this. What was that?
Oh, this, Jack, just button in as usual. Uh, I was, I was just gonna say, we also talked about even breaking them down. Even to smaller phases that are maybe a little more manageable financially. That's all.
Um, and and just to show. The, and that's exactly it, Jack, uh, as we are going through phase two, that that it's going to really set the roadmap as far as. What the next fa- phases are, because we have to understand what we have to water in the ground. It, you. We can, we can sort of set the roadmap in terms of what steps, steps need to happen, but in terms of how you get there. That those, you need to understand what you have.
Absolutely.
So, um, I'm gonna. Get if he's, oh, Krista, sorry, I jumped in real quick.
Um, I I already touched on this, but again, bait, like I said, phase two is that would be a test well program where we would drill the five, five wells. Um, throughout those different locations. Um, I I already touched on this, but again, bait, like I said, phase two is that would be a test well program where we would drill the five, five wells, um, throughout those different locations. Um, and do some water quality testing too. Um, we we would perform some hydraulic modeling to understand, um, you know, determine capacity at those new source locations. Um, we would look financially, um, not only at like, what does that new project cost look like? But also some revenue versus debt service, um, projection or analysis, um, and certainly touch on funding options, um. For the project, and we would kind of summarize that and updated report and said, here's our, here's our findings and, um, you know, hopefully have better idea of of overall project costs and and phasing moving forward. And should the town want to pursue, you know, a conversation with Hopedale, we could certainly, um, uh, include that as part of the next phase. For waste water.
What's the timeframe for phase two?
So the the plan would be to start in the next couple of months, um, and would probably, I think, be a a year.
Yeah, I would like to get these guys, uh, with your permission eventually, under contract within the next month. So they can start right now after tonight, they're no longer under contract with phase one.
Yeah, so this is just a graphic rep representation of, um. Of the phasing, it's a little hard to see here, um. Maybe I can zoom in a little bit.
Uh, Zach, could you or Scott or Krista, maybe for those. Explain what water system we now have in Mendon? There might be some people that don't know that and we see all these little bubbles around here.
Yeah, of course. So if if we're looking at the, um, the purple areas with the the blue lines in the middle and these little subsystem labels on the outside. That's the current wa- wat- water system in terms of water, public water infrastructure in Mendon. Um, they're formally named the Cape Road Subsystem, Route sixteen Subsystem and Dudley Road Subsystem. They're all fed by the town of Hopedale. And wholly supplied from there.
And just if like, it just to touch on that, I believe the six, the Route sixteen and the Dudley Road. Or at least Route sixteen is mandated for them to supply the water at the moment. And they they get, believe they don't pay the rates that we that. And this is correct, like you know better than this.
Correct, Ronnie, uh, the, um, the water commissioners are in control of Cape, the Cape Road Subsystem. The other two, I believe, are not under the water commissions.
They're not under. They're just like regular Hopedale residents, they pay whatever.
They rate pairs like one of like all the Hopedans. So generally, that's, those are the, you know, the areas. And as you can see, the Cape Road Subsystem is obviously the the largest subsystem, uh, includes a portion of Route one forty. Uh, or a size of a portion of Route one forty that's in in Mendon, um. So that that everything else, as you, most folks know, is are on private wells, private septic with within the town. There's no sewer infrastructure in the town. There is one, one more thing you may or may not know is that, um, two commercial properties at the south end of one forty that are on the Bellingham line. Are both supplied with water by.
Oh, I think we heard that before.
Bellingham, right. So. And they were.
Built their own connection.
Lowells, which was Mark Lockness and Copart, and they were, and this whole Cape Road Subsystem originally was supposed to be. Was, well, was, no, it was originally Bellingham. Right. When it was first, because Farny Concrete, which is in Bellingham, also owns the farm and you see Farnys.
Yeah.
And that was, that was the. He's long gone now, but he just told the town of Bellingham, connect. And then the people that got the Cape Road and the and the Bates Street connection were employees of his. That made it happen, they showed up at a special town meeting and, I don't know, voted on like twelve people with her or something in nineteen fifty.
Yeah, that happens.
Right, that was a lot of history in those. Uh, yeah. But in any case, um, just for those, that that's the sort of setup and and, um. The actual phasing of the this project, um, phase, phase one is. Phase three, I'm sorry, three, we're starting from the end of phase two on this this map, right? Is the phase three A distribution from the well site. To Route sixteen up up in this area, right, right where my cursor is now. And then this phase three B, and again, this is heavily dependent on. The amount of flow that we are pulling out of, out of the ground. Uh, be from Route sixteen to, uh, you know, the area of the storage tank. A storage tank location is right behind, um, Route, the Route sixteen major corridor, right off of, uh. Right near Taft Ave and, uh, Millville Street. Just so you're aware, that's a town owned parcel, uh, baseball fields, I believe. Phase four is. The connection, um. To Cape Road, you know, the existing infrastructure that already exists, it's in orange there. This area. Phase five is building out the Route sixteen. Subs, uh, Route sixteen corridor. All the purple and then includes a small portion up to the school on on North Ave. And then phase six is finishing off connecting through the remainder of the Route one forty quarter.
What was the thing that landed water? Just kind of curious. Oh, to connect to existing water where sixteen is phase. Five.
Yep.
Did any thought to doing sixteen first where the.
Those two can very well be switched. The only reason we, this one was done in that manner.
Yeah.
Is. So we show on three A.
Yeah.
That. There's a portion here that connects here, we're we're choosing a look, we had to choose a location because it's three alternatives. But as if alternative to were to be implemented. It would cross the Cape Road Subsystem and effectively connected at that time. So in terms of what one would get done first, you know, to accommodate all alternatives. It it was done that way, but certainly could be changed if needed, uh, especially phase four and phase five. The idea too is that's also the biggest, the the most amount pull in terms of, um. Water, water demand, right? So you could, you could pull from that area, so.
And as Jack mentioned, you know, the limits of going all the way up Route sixteen in either direction, that could be phased, that could be prioritized. There's, there's all sorts of different.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask, I'm just wondering about the biggest benefit to town.
Is the Route sixteen.
Right. Sooner than later, if we were to go that route.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, I don't know, one forty or sixteen is.
Yeah, either one, one.
Uh, as a matter of fact, I think there's probably even more, more development. Opportunities on one forty than we even, other than the la- the last. Piece that we have, it's there that. I mean, I'm sure everybody along the way is kind of collect, but as far as new opportunity for us, for for our commercial growth, it would be probably more than one forty.
Yeah.
At the moment.
Is that much closer to four ninety five, all of that?
Four.
I think also it's like, you know, you you connect to that subsystem.
These guys have already heard me say it ten times, over near where we already have it zoned industrial across the street. So one of the aquifer locations is or at the corner.
Oh, you mean.
Jinx into the highway garage and across the street is our industrial area. And even though the yield is is less, the potential for return could be greater to us because we already have it zoned. And there's a parcel that basically lines up behind that, that goes to where they would like to put the tower, which is near the ball field. That also is in that same stretch there in terms of build out, right, about. Getting something back quicker, right?
Connecting the dots really and and really being smart about it. I think we gotta pay a lot, once we know the yield and what's possible, then we can start. Connecting these dots in the best way possible, the most strategic way.
Uh, the plans for, um, Route sixteen, the state plans for, uh, resurfacing. I mean, it strikes me that putting water mains will involve digging up the roads. So like, it seems like the timing of that Route sixteen, uh, work should be.
Coordinated.
Coordinated with that, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, spend, dig, dig it once, resurface it once, yeah, absolutely. Uh, yeah, and the only other thing I was gonna say about connection to Cape Road is like, that's, that's a set customers that you can immediately. Turn on, it's not like you're laying services and close the valve to Hopedale, right? And then you have a, you have all the the customer base, right? That soup, like you don't laying services, you don't have to go through all that. So another reason why it was Facebook, whatever makes sense in terms of downsides for those two, it's certainly.
Can I, uh, do you have any, uh, information regarding? Back in the day, uh, when we did some testing, because I, I'm pretty sure that they did some testing. Where the lake is across Kinsley Lane, up in the hill, I think that may have been up a rock. Applever, uh, that, uh, uh, but they they did some testing and that, so. It was amazing. So I don't know if if that is any information about that, except in my experience.
So they, I know they, in nineteen eighty six, they went through a cop, like they went through and looked at all the groundwater resources and re- and actually in two thousand, they expanded upon it. A couple, two different firms, um, Bedrock Aquifers were, put that in terms of where fracture fractures were. But I don't know, I didn't remember them actually doing any sort of testing out there for Bedrock Aquifers. Yeah, or based on, based on those reports.
The other thing you said at the beginning too was we have to exhaust the gravel first.
Right, I, I just was wondering, because that is so close to Route sixteen.
Right.
Itself that I didn't, I just was thinking about that and and at the time, again, that was, that was a while ago. I think of how long ago it was.
So in, I need to tell you in that area.
They said that, they did say they did some testing.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, I was on the board of health at that time, back then, back in the. Yeah.
So I think, I I know, I know in that general area from that two thousand, two thousand two report, they did reference that that was a fracture where where there's a fracture pinch point.
Yeah.
That area was a decent spot, but it, you know, in terms of public water system development. The guidelines are pretty clear on developing, then you know, i- if you can't, if you exhaust all options as far as staying in gravel aquifers go. Then, then, you know, you start moving on to bedrock aquifers, that's the source.
Just thinking, so it's to Route sixteen.
Yeah, right, my area, I hear you.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
No, I'm with it. Zoom out, okay? All right, all right.
All right, so just closing out, I just wanted to note there's different, there's several different funding options. I mean, thinking big picture here of how to fund these projects, um, there's opportunities with district improvement financing or DIF. Just capital recovery option, certainly sue veteran or assessments is is an option. Also, um, we do a lot of work with, uh, state revolving fund and clean water, um, and drinking water, direct funding, um, at low interest loans. Um, and certainly federal funding, um, whether it be earmarks or infrastructure bills. So there's definitely options. We've also put a laundry list of, uh, more specific, uh, funding opportunities that we'd be happy to work with the town moving forward on kind of figuring out which ones, um. Should be pursued. I'm not gonna go through all this, but as long as there. And that's all we have, so, um. Any questions?
I have one question, actually two questions, uh, the first being, uh, the connection to the school system. I know we kind of emphasized that in September, um, did you include that in any, in any of your cost estimations for the alternatives?
It's, it's, so to, right now, it's just to the cloth school.
Yeah.
Um. It hasn't gone up, uh, to Misco, um. We, we can look at that as future, as a future thing, as we hone in on as part of our, you know, hydraulic modeling effort. Uh, but that, as as far as it stands right now, we didn't want to go too far that way, cause it's up in elevation. It costs, cause we, there need to be some sort of pumping booster pumping station or that sort of thing. So basically, current.
That's higher than what it's.
Right, and, uh, at the stage we're at right now, right? Like, we're looking at area we serve, you know, all the demand that's associated with it and, you know. Just on the groundwater, uh, Water Management Act permitting tool, uh, there's information that we, you know, certain amount of. Demand you are pulling from a, uh, sub basin aquifer. You can start to go over thresholds for how much mitigation and and water you put back into the ground. Cause every area, all the extra water you pull out of the ground, you have to get it back in the ground and recharge the aquifer. Uh, so you start going over those thresholds with demand. Then you, uh, before we got too far along and we knew what those, those demand numbers were, I mean, those thresholds were. We wanted to stay within, you know, a reasonable amount and ser- serve as much to the town could, but, you know. We gotta, you know, before we even get to that step, we need to understand how much water we can pull out of the ground.
Yeah, that that makes sense, that seems like a reasonable approach. We're talking about stories, it's a traditional water tower.
Yeah, so it's a, it would be a pedestal spearoid tank, uh, you know, big ball looks like golf ball. Gets you the edge you need for the aqua pressure in your systems.
And that would serve even over the Cape Road Subsystem.
Correct.
Okay, cool. I have one more question actually for the, um. Uh, option number one, the town on parcel, so I know that there's some other intended uses for that parcel right now. So how much does this interfere with that and how do the plants have to be kind of tied together?
Jack, did you?
Oh, is that, that's me, yeah, um.
It kind of sounds like tax, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, Brendan. We are, we have a proposal out now for an affordable, uh, housing project up to forty units. And the, um, existing senior center and the, uh, DPW are there. Senior Center wishes to expand. Um, we, I think this might complement it if indeed it's the type of system we're hoping, then they would just tag along. You know, timing is everything, and if we find a nonprofit who's willing to build the, uh, affordable housing. Uh, project, they're gonna want to move as quickly as possible, so. And we already have a well sited for that, um, albeit on the other side of the wetlands. So it's something we need to talk about, not a question, not a question, but I'd like to think that this, if if. It's feasible, I'd like to think that they could all be married into it.
Any other questions?
Good, thank you, great study.
Yes, cer- certainly that report has a lot more information in it in this presentation. Um, like Jack said, there's all sorts of documentation about the talks we had with the neighborhood communities and just everything we looked at, the past studies. You know, just creating this new baseline to kind of start from when you're, when you're considering. At least water and drinking water for the community, so a lot of information in there. We're happy to answer questions as you continue through it, but this was certainly the high level overview to give you kind of the the summary of recommendations.
But but the key is the next step is to find out exactly how much water is available in the ground in those three areas.
Right, right, and then, you know, the hydraulic modeling. Right, right, quality two is a good point, um, and then the hydraulic modeling associating with building out that that system. You know, based on the results of the the test well program and the financial capability. So it's all, it's all meshed together because you can't do one without the other.
And then, and and that number to do that next phase was three hundred K?
That's with a wastewater evaluation as well, yes.
Yeah, so two, two hundred and fifty thousand.
I got two fifty, so I don't know. I, I, what I'm gonna ask them to do with your permission, Mike, is to have them put together a scope which I can share with the selectmen. And then, you know, you're gonna have to make a deci- I'd like you to make a decision on whether you want them to pursue the wastewater or not.
One of.
Sorry.
Sorry, one of the things that we've been talking about the last couple of years, and I just, I want to reiterate and thank you, you know already. How appreciative I am about this baseline that I was insisting that we have so that we can start having data to make decisions from. And how critical it is to move to this phase two or two A or whatever it is to get these numbers that we need to really see if this is feasible or not. And sort of either keep this discussion going for forever or end it for forever, right? And that's what we need to move forward. And one of the things this board and actually previous board to this one, um, prioritized using ARPA funds related to water and sewer infrastructure. And we haven't touched it for this purpose. For this purpose, um, so we have about one point eight million dollars sitting as a match or as for the next phase. So Jack has done an excellent job of going out and getting all these grants in addition, but we have, we're holding on to that. And hope that this isn't just a report that sits on a shelf and that we actually get this data. And so when Jack comes back with his scope, my recommendation is going to be that we make a vote in order to use additional funding from that. A hundred thousand in order to move on to the next phase, or what if you decide to do sewer at this point or not, that, you know, that's where it would come from.
Well, when we talk about, when we talk about three hundred thousand dollars and two hundred fifty, we'll say, well, I'm sorry. Say this again, you said you had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars used and the estimate's three hundred thousand dollars. Is that where we're at, Jack?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I think it's a good use of fifty.
How much of, how much of that is, is, is the sewer?
Fifty thousand.
So it's fifty to go down to Hopedale and see if we want to do it, are we talking about a, a, a home case? I don't need to be silly about it, I'm just, I want, I'm.
The town of Mendon how come, like, now we're collaborating with another town, right? So what do we want to do and what do we not want to not do it and, and we can fine tune that number? I, I didn't know, um, I wanted to kind of keep, understand how everyone was feeling before we proceeded with wastewater, because.
I just, I think we definitely want to have a meeting with the water board and talk about this too, about thoughts based upon this report, right? And next step so that we're all aligned and where we're going, right? And I think that's part of the scope, they'll come back and then we'll bring them in too, right? Again, and make sure that we're talking together.
Yeah, I, I should have added that, um, Scott and I did go in front of the water commissioner as well, was it a month ago, Scott? So they're pretty up to speed on what's there, I don't know if Vinnie's at the meeting, I know that, um, Kevin and, and. Um, Dan couldn't make it tonight, but, uh. Uh, yeah, we can brief them on the scope as well, but I'd like to be able to bring you, you know, a, a scope that, that's agreeable. So we can get them under contact as soon as possible, because I don't want to lose momentum here, this is pretty important stuff.
Even if we have a schedule of an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, okay.
And, I almost like to see who are all pertinent stakeholders within the town and start having one meeting. With all stakeholders to, so we start making decisions.
Yeah, we've been having group meetings with, with people this entire time.
Right.
Because we, we're no key decisions really needed to be made.
We're getting to.
And now we're there, which is why I'm saying, make sure that we do it right, since we've got one great shot at this. Let's make sure we're all in the same room, so that there's no confusion about what was agreed to or not agreed to or where we're going, right? You might disagree with a water or sewer, but that's a discussion to be had, right?
I think one of the things that, that, uh, in terms of sewage, that, uh, I think you have to think about. Is that Hopedale is planning a quite a big, um, development in their center down there. So that's gonna take another bundle.
Yeah, capacity, right.
So you say we better hurry up?
They're, they're planning, that's part of their plan, that's in their plan, and it has to do with all kinds of things, so, I mean.
Open hole there.
Right, and, uh, and so that, you know, that's going to be compromising their sewer treatment plants.
Correct, and I think that's a part of like what the phase two, what we preliminary laid it out as. For wastewater evaluation, we're getting sort of that information in addition to like looking at the treatment plant and taking, taking a site visit there. What I will say is that, uh, based on preliminary discussions with Hopedale, their, their dry weather flow, meaning no rain is. Very low compared to their current actual permit, permitted deal, it's just during that wet weather. And, and that's where that, the I I component is, the I I component is key for that, right? If we can help mitigate that system.
Yeah, we're just.
And there is ways we can.
Never just one smoking gun.
Especially if the numbers work.
That's part of the base to be.
So, uh.
Looking at.
So just to caveat, that was a conversation we had, so we would want to look at some real data, confirm, confirm what their plans are. Um, you know, we could. I think.
Is all this data gathering part of phase two?
Potentially.
Okay.
So let's just call that fifty K a placeholder until him and I talk and figure out what, you know, what's that scope gonna be.
So, I think the good news is we're all really excited to keep it going. It sounds like Jack suggested, let's put together a formal scope for phase two with costs. Like tomorrow. And they're, they're bringing it back if we need an extra meeting, right? So.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Lot of information.
Right, have a great night, thank you, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Budget time is here again, so Jim's gonna be getting email. I'll just see half of your box.
It's a hundred thirty-three million. That's right, alright. Thank you, that was the plan.
No, this is, this is really exciting, you know, to see this town, you know, the, the concrete information displayed going forward.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael, we, we gave updates reports to the website.
Yes.
They, I think they're already there, Dan had asked me, oh.
The only thing we don't, the only thing we don't is, is that was the valley tech.
No, but they, I think, I think this, the waters up, now you can put, I think the DLS is live on their site, but we can put that one on our site here. And then the budget documents are all in except for the hard copy.
We have, we have emails of the, we have a, the, the DLS document, so we can put it on the drive and actually put it on the website.
Yeah, I think people would be interested in downloading it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right, why don't we, uh, circle back to our town hall update?
Sure, so, um, two weeks ago, I told you that we were starting again downstairs, our bids came in. Uh, Danny, um, went and took some additional jobs in between because, um, we were delayed. He started in February, February first, this plan is still to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. We have a, a bunch of encumbered money that we were unable to spend because of the delay, so that, you know. It's not critical that it gets spent by the end of the fiscal year, but from a bookkeeping perspective, it'd be a nightmare to keep going. And so we're trying to really expedite that, I don't think it's going to be the problem, we met today to sort of finalize what. We're looking at in terms of sizing of things and locations of things and so. And then added some additional air units in order to circulate better downstairs, one additional unit. So my hope is that it's going to stay within currently allotted funds. Um, we did have one positive surprise just a few days ago, right, last week, I guess, where the, this is how this project evolves, which is. We, we had planned on using carpet on that entire side, turns out that the floors are in great repairable condition. On that entire side with a tin ceiling run, so, uh, I had about thirty-seven hundred dollars left from a previous article. And so I, I'm gonna try this, Danny's saying between six and eight to get it done, I'm gonna try to fit it in and we'll see. But if not, I've already emailed historic about that, about, you know, I assume this is a thing we want to prioritize if possible, I think that would look incredible.
So historic has been, has been involved in this process where you've been meeting with them.
Yeah, so we met a couple, we met in February specifically about the Alco, but we did a walkthrough of the space over there. Um, and they've been on the emails about expediting, like getting the cosmetic improvements to that end office. Expedited, so we can get it back in use if need be.
The, the floors, are you refurbishing original hardwood?
Yeah, and so you can go down there now and actually see them, so, so we still have to do one more coat on the hallways. But now, like, we'll be able to incorporate the two.
It's gonna, it's gonna blow with that, that conference room area, and it's, it's the same boards, they wouldn't. When he pulled it up, I can't get some, uh, the data wiring and, and moving some of that. And we kicked it up, I said, why we putting carpet in here and he started to pull it, he said, well, then he started to pull it up more. It was got better as we pulled, so it was, you know.
Right, it really is, like, every time a layer comes down, then we can basically see what's there or not there. And it's been really interesting even what's in the walls in terms of, like, when it was built, how it was built, what got done. And then making a determination about is, do we touch this at all, right, and go around?
And that's a question I have, when you say, how do we make the determination? How do we make any determinations as you discover things as you go?
So typically, like, that's happened with the floors, so Danny, so the, every piece of this is like, we have a general concept. About what we want to do in the area, right? If the original hole is create a conference room space, right, great, starts there. So what does that look like in determination of size, but really depends. Which walls of these could move or not move, right? Then it, that goes from.
Who's involved in the decision-making process, so sort of not even like, I don't, I think, I think honestly, probably we need to make the decisions. And so I don't think it's a broad decision-making.
It, it, interject that, there was a discussion a couple of years ago about, about the concept, but the issue was. You don't know ex- what, what the details are gonna be until you get it opened up, and then of course, we had, we, we were stalled for what about six months?
Because that's. Now that we're doing it again, we discover something new, I'd say, you know, we know the historic commission.
Yeah, they've been meeting with Kim and Kim has been going along with the plan that was laid out, but that's where we're having this discussion right now.
Right, so I just, my point is, do we need to sort of formalize a little bit the communication or make sure that, a- a- at a very minimum, that nobody says, I didn't know. Right, I want to just avoid that dynamic, if it, I'm not saying it's happening, I'm just saying, let's get the right people there, say, touch the stone, say, oh yeah, look. Preserve the wood floors, I mean, if Kathy's listening, she's probably.
Yeah.
Good, originals being saved, right, but we just want to make sure that all the. They're not decision makers, but there's people we should always communicate to stakeholders, right?
Right, I just want to make sure the right people are here.
Would a hundred percent say that's a hundred percent happening right now.
Right.
It's exactly, it has been, it's laid out, that's happened right now. Historic was called, Kim's gonna meet with her, go over the floors, there's no decision that's been made yet a hundred percent. There's been discussion of, we want to keep them, there's been discussion about what the cost is gonna be, Kim's working on that angle. There's no change down there right now whatsoever, except that the hogwood was found under that carpet as it was progressed. And exactly everything you just laid out is in progress.
Right.
Just, well, it was just said.
It was a concept a few years ago and it's just been walking around and they've been involved as far as I know. In every step along the way, and there really hasn't been a lot, except it's was torn apart, right, and.
Well, I think what Mike is trying to say, if he wants to know who is getting final say in the design.
Not final say, I don't know who's getting communicated to, because I'll go to a meeting and I hear, I don't know what's going on. So as much as it's being said, I want to make sure everybody's got it documented, so you can say, no, you do know what's going on, we had a meeting on state and said. Yeah, remember we talked about the hardwood floor, that's all.
Right.
So a bold noise, because I think this is really good work and I want to see it completed quickly and not have people say. Well, did this happen or did that happen? I, Kim, you know, people say, I don't know, and I've been in meetings that I've seen people in, listening, who say, I don't know. And I'm like, well, let's just make sure we over communicate, is my point, right?
Well, I just want to say, I think at this point, since we've been in it for about a year and a half, and. The, every time we've reached out to have a meeting, we've had a meeting, every time someone has asked for a specific piece of information, they've gotten a piece of information. Or a document that was existed or a plan that was existed, right? Every time a decision gets made around. Who, like, at least for the second part, right? Are we gonna continue with the same vendor and have the same quality of work? We've had those meetings, had those conversations, right? Are we gonna prioritize the historic components that we find? Absolutely, we've done that all the way through, right? So there haven't been any new significant changes besi- post alcove, whatever, window situation down there, right? Nothing is.
Just dismiss that.
Right, nothing is, nothing's changed since then, um, besides timetable, right? And it's, I understand the frustration around on both sides about how do we not know exactly what this is gonna look like? Because we really don't know, like, and so we have a general idea, but I'm trusting Manny when he's taking down a wall. Like he just took down this one side of the wall, the opposite side of my office, to take a look at that, to look at the, there, you know, there's some weird poles down there. That can't move at all, right? Those are eyesores in a weird sort of way, so like, you have to take into consideration, like. So do we move the wall to that spot, to move a door closer, like, what makes the most sense in this space, right? If the goal is preservation of the ceiling and the creation of the conference room, you know, consider every little piece of that as we go. And, you know, just with my office downstairs, you know, there's a question about, does that wall move? It seems like a waste, we already built the wall, like, if there's a hole and if we move the wall and the ceiling has to get done, and cost is obviously a big piece here, right? Because this budget is not large, it's been small. And so, you know, we're at the final, we're at the final stretch now, and we are making choices now. I'm making choices, or when these guys come in to do wiring, we're making choices more based upon cost now than I was, let's say, when we first started, right? So, you know, floors are a priority, right? For sure, but moving the wall entirely, not as much anymore, right? Like, so that if it's, if there's no historic value to it, or it doesn't add any specific component that's necessary, we think about that, right? Like, does, do we need a second door in this conference room? It's a nice to have, do we have to have it? Probably not, aesthetically, does it make sense? Yes, no, right, just like the choices down at the end, in the end room, should we strip that paneling off the wall? Expose what's under there, it's horsehair plaster on one side, it's like general plaster on the other side, no, we can just paint it. Paint the ceiling, change the tiles out, change the carpet out, change that door out, it basically looks like the rest of the building without taking it down to bare bones. But like, when we started this, the general plan was always get a conference room, clean up these offices. Get the floors refinished, have a more general pleasant experience when you go into the town hall, right? And so.
Bring everybody else along and they're, they're saying, oh, cool.
Right.
And there's no.
Right.
Noise.
I don't, I hate.
That's what.
I think there's gonna be noise.
Yes.
No matter.
We just need to do everything we, it, it sounds like we are, humanly possible to avoid noise and include people. In, in this process of something goes left instead of right, say, hey, especially if you work in this building. I think they, they're not decision makers, but folks working the building would probably want to know.
Right. And, and, and it has been, but while we're discussing it, there's another piece to this, which with the state. Right. And environmental issues and I know Joyce, she would come along, so I think, is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so please brief the board on that.
Sure.
Uh, well. I'm not exactly sure how this transcribed, but, uh, I think that one of the, the employees was, uh.
Well, it doesn't really matter how, it's just.
Right, concerned about the air quality and, um, we ended up. Talking to this fellow who was in charge of this, that his name is Mike Feeny. Uh, and so he's coming tomorrow to, uh, evaluate the area down there. And see what recommendations are required, actually. So I'm gonna meet with them and anybody else that.
Is he gonna do, he's going to do the main floor too, right, is he gonna, that, so.
He's coming out.
Right, we do, we did actually do a test in twenty fourteen and they did monitor levels in twenty fourteen. So I'm really interested.
Monitor levels of what?
I, all different sorts, there's a report that I forwarded you, they monitored all.
Didn't get it.
Yeah, it was, well, it was emailed.
So we did a study one time before the basin was remodeled and they actually did all the floors. This floor, the main floor, and the bottom floor, and then registered all different sorts of levels. And so that's why I was saying, if you really, that was before we did renovations, especially in the basement, so I really am curious. And getting as many data points as we can in the different, some of the most problematic areas in the building are directly above the boiler room. Which is not, all this in that, that corner over there, in that, I mean, as bad as any of the enclosed windowless rooms downstairs, so like.
I think he'll do anything.
Yeah, so if, if, if we can do all of the floors, I'd love to have that data.
I'm sure, I'm sure that he will, I mean, he seems to be, I mean, uh, the day that I talked to him. I, I called him at quarter past nine.
Yeah.
In the morning, and I finally was able to hang up at eleven twenty-five.
And just saying. Yeah, so yeah, that would be like, just, I would love to, I mean, I mean, part of it is just selfishly, because. Yeah. So yeah, that would be like just, I would love to, I mean, I mean, part of it is just selfishly because I did. That's part of the reason that I redid the basement or was so pressed to do it because of the conditions down there. Was anything hazardous that was reported? Let's just be clear in that study.
Right.
But like, it just was so unappealing and just not great. And so I really just want to see that it actually had a benefit beyond just cosmetic. That would really make me feel, feel good.
Yeah. I think while he's here, it makes sense to get as much data as possible. I guess.
Because he's, he, he, believe me, thorough. Tell me he's thorough. Yeah.
Can you send that again? Cause I'm not seeing it here.
Sure. I thought it was in the email I sent. It should be attached to the email that I, when I.
Yeah. Just general question. Do you think there'd be any impact for fall to organics? Cause it's like, you know, there's, there's eating stuff going on downstairs. If they're going to impact any levels, we should be.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, but the, the, the thing is that, you know, that if Massachusetts and this area of Massachusetts is, is, has a lot of radon. So that, that's problematic. Um, you know, uh, I don't know. Did they test for radon back in the day?
They did. And so, uh, just, uh, so I'll just, you guys are all CC'd on this, but I'll just do, I'll send it all again. Um. Fix doesn't stay still attached, but yeah, they did. I mean, the, the numbers that we had two complaints, carbon monoxide was of concern. And then radon was another concern, particularly, you know, but we did put in, that's what I said. We, we put mini split in and we did sort of, you may remember, you may all, some of you may remember, but like in the basement before, there was like a weird vent that went inside, outside. And that was the, and it was blocked with that shelf that was in the back of the building with all that. So a lot of the pictures in this report are actually of like clutter and dust and mold. And like, looking at it was like a trip down memory lane. Like it's amazing how it's transformed, but.
That's where the board of health office was.
Downstairs. Well, Missy, Missy.
Back in the day.
But she had a window. So the numbers in her office weren't as bad. But over it, where the building department was in that back section was bad. In the planning boardroom, which is the one now also wasn't great, but all they had then was that one vent that was like, kind of went outside into the rocks. So.
Yeah, right.
So, so we put system in there, but I don't, I'm curious. I don't think it should know. I mean, really, I think it, right.
He, he, he seems to be very thorough, but, uh, he was actually driving to Agawam, uh, that morning that I was talking about. So I think I, I was his distraction.
I'm going to go to the right amount of time.
Honest to God, I, I, I just.
That's not the end of the earth, but you can see it.
You know, I was like, I couldn't even move because I was dogging down. Anyway.
I just.
Mark.
That's great.
But so Joyce, just FYI, it's in your Menden one, not your Gmail. So maybe that's why you didn't see it. When I replied, I, I always try to use the Menden email addresses because.
Yeah.
So just, I'm sending it again right now.
Oh, good. Okay.
Take a look at it, but that you'll have it for, you'll see where they measured last time.
Right.
Two, I noticed like the assessors were here and I wasn't sure if they joined us for this conversation, but I know that Sue had an email, a request to get Jean's door changed. Is that part of this or is that?
So we kind of responded to the door change, uh, like over a month ago about that. Danny just placed it aside. And that, he had just started working that day. So he's on his list of the things, um, that he has to do. So he, I think they emailed on the 31st and he was starting on the first.
Yeah. I think she asked, can we make that a priority?
Right. And since then, so, um, I, I also said in an email, I thought I sent to all of you. So we've offered many, many alternative locations for work, our, our offices, this location. We have plenty of space now, right? Um, but in addition, I've asked Danny to expedite this office that's on this main floor. I mean, I know we're in construction, but so he's committed to having it done, ready to use by St. Patrick's Day, basically. So within two weeks. So.
They were just asking for a door to be, uh, changes and added.
Well, the, the issue is when, once this, about what's going on with the what air quality in that, on the, on the bottom floor. And there's an office that could be ready on this floor. I, I think all of it, we'll find out tomorrow.
But just as long as they're aware of what the current thinking is, right?
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure we're all on that email about the door. I responded directly to her about that. And then, and then when we had, talking about air quality, also alternative locations.
Yeah, no, the air.
No one has to work in a station.
I see. I never saw, I was on the original email asking about the door.
Yeah.
I think I was on the response.
Okay. Okay. I'll check right.
Lonnie, you had a.
Nah.
Okay. Anything else on, on the update?
The campus, uh, is going great, obviously. Um, so everything's really on schedule over there. And the, the next phase, we'll have a meeting next week, but the, um, this section over here is supposed to be an ADA walkway. So we're going to be working with CPC very soon, or Dan is going to be working to make sure that the items that we, we, an article was approved for fifty-six thousand dollars specifically related to the walkway. And believe me, we already need every dollar. So we want to make sure that things that are qualified, uh, as these bills come in, it gets applied to the correct accounts. But I mean, that's going great. And I have, I just want to say, even though it's early, UEL has been incredible to work with. They are, and I, we've worked with other contract firms in the past. Maybe it was the scope of the project, but they have been awesome, really. So I'm just.
It looked awesome.
Yeah. And I mean, really, really easy work, super responsive, very flexible, really accommodating to requests. And I just. It's, it's been, it's been great.
Any word on the well or anything from the water department about the treatment systems?
So I did get it right. So I got a quote the other day from Dan on a filtration system. Um, that was like ten six, I believe. Uh, and so I was, that's, I was just looking at the, the numbers this yesterday. That's why I knew that. This over here needed to stop applying over here. I think we'll be able to fit that within the budget, within the, with the campus budget.
Right.
So.
May I ask, what, what are they finding in the water?
Magnes. And I, and there's also some, some PFAS. Right. That's what, yeah.
So that is, I mean, manganese nine, the world.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I have a filter in my house and, uh, we went down four hundred feet and then manganese nine. You know, it's like, everybody has it, but it does need to be filtered and it, you know, it's, it's, it's important to, uh. Check it to everybody, you know, like I'd like to put out like a little thing sometimes. Everybody check your, get your water tested, you know, uh, make sure that everything, you're getting everything that you need because.
Yeah.
But that's another.
Uh, I mean, I was happy to see that it was ten thousand dollars. I hope that's the only one. I've, that's what I'm saying, like that, I think manageable.
It seems, yeah, it, it seems like, I don't think I've.
It's a lot better than.
My house was yours that much?
No.
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 So therefore, what I also didn't have PFAS, I don't think. So maybe PFAS is the additional cost.
Right.
That you would right now.
No, I just put it in.
But now everywhere would right now.
This is something that, this is something that's changed. Literally, I'm told, uh, Sue was saying within the six months that, well, they just.
How long ago?
Six months.
Oh, yeah. No, I've been there a long, a few years.
Yeah.
There's a profit well legislation coming through right now as well.
From the way I should.
Yeah.
Yeah. Big things. All right. So, so we got, we got that now. As far as a warrant article discussion, the, the warrant doesn't close for two weeks. So I'm just going to move that because that's, you know, we can discuss it after that date, but we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I know there were two, two issues. One of them is to increase the size of the, uh, of the ZBA. Another one about, uh, funding for the next phase of the senior center. We'll discuss that. We have time to do that. We'll talk about that in two weeks. So, um, I'm looking for motions. Did everybody get a chance to look at January fourth and February first?
I moved to, oh, sorry. Move to, move the meeting minutes of January fourth and February first, twenty twenty.
I was second. Exactly. Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next meeting, uh, will be the fifteenth.
Well, before you say, we go, I just want to point out that the fifteenth, because we've had some movement in the budget departments.
That'd be a big one.
We have a lot of, I mean, I don't, it'll be super lengthy. I mean, Merzda will be here, so that will take up some time. The Board of Health will be here, and I know they want to talk about some things. The Council of Aging will be here. The library will be here. These are all typically boards that want to do presentations of their own.
Well, do we?
And then highway, but I mean, I've done most of, I've done the highway budget, so I can speak to that at any point. But we might want to think about, because we have adding time for the meeting to start talking about the warrant. Because we're getting close to the April sort of deadline. They don't want us to get into a situation.
Adam, Adam, Adam.
Yeah.
Next week.
Or like start earlier or just plan for a really long meeting because.
Everybody available on the eighth, next week?
I'm not available on these.
What about the meeting, what about the meeting after though?
Right. Because we want.
We could double up.
Because.
The week after.
Technically the, the articles can come in until what? The seventeenth, right? And we want to do at least two passes of those articles, right? So I'm just telling.
Right.
Like hopefully.
We have a little bit of time now because.
Oh, because we're doing the mailer.
Right. So we've got like another week or two.
Yeah.
That's still, like, it's, it's a quicker turnaround. It's right in there that we'll have to meet. And then they'll be doing the public hearing for the budget, I guess, around the twelfth. But based upon this, these numbers today, I think, I mean, we're negative. Yeah, we're especially.
A lengthier means, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Twenty second, if we do the extra meeting on the twenty second, and we're actually able to comment everything in that. There's, we have others. What I'm just saying is, right now we're on schedule with the board of health meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
And it.
Yeah, we do that, then it.
Kind of, right. We can reset from there. It just helps meet at ten of those.
Right. Cause I think we're going to meet the fifth, but it would have been April fifth and April nineteenth. And then the public hearing and the budget theoretically would be the twelfth, usually right in the middle of the month where we have a joint meeting just for that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know what the school's calendar is about their certifying their budget though. You know, when their final number would be.
I think they're, um, they might be the twenty-third. They need to, their budget hearing is like the twenty-third of March.
Right. So I mean, based on these numbers today and just the minimal local contribution, contribution number for Merzda. I mean, we're negative six hundred thousand dollars. So, and that's without whatever their budget records are for their budget. So that's beyond a level of between BVT, Norfolk Aggie, Merzda. That's eight hundred thousand dollars of an increase. So it, I don't know how much room there really is there. And I don't want to take it all out on Merzda, right? So we need to actually have some conversations around that. So.
I mean, to that point, I was saying, it probably makes sense to sort of summarize now where we are in terms of the next meeting. Say, where are all the, the increases now, whether it be school, um, departments, you see where the, what the hole is, where it's coming from. Cause we need to start thinking about, what are we going to do about that, right? So it's good to get the updates, but now I think it's sort of, I'm at a point where we have to start to close on the budget and figure out how do we finance or do we not finance some of these things?
Well, so there is a tab right in the budget thing that updates as these things get updated, right? I have a budget drivers tab basically that breaks them out. Um, last week or maybe it was this week. I can't remember. I actually went in and started separating even out where the contractual salary increases come from. Cause people do ask that. How much is police and how much is sound hall and how much is, I like, our drivers are things that we are committed to, right? In contract, uh, everything else is optional. I mean, I can tell you, I don't have two hundred thousand dollars to find in this budget or three hundred to cut. I mean, we don't, without cutting services. I know that is a fact. So, um, we can cut everything that was asked for a request, which was a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. It's not going to get us anywhere near any of that. You're talking about going back and making decisions like, can we. Power up and change retiree benefits like we've been talking about and save sixty grand? Can we take, um, postpone the capital replacement costs in the public works for a year? Because we're changing the department and maybe we won't need it next year. Like that's what we're talking about, right? All the money that we put aside that I knew would eventually get cut for these reorganizations and reclassifications, forty-five thousand, that's will be gone. It won't be there to do, right? Unless we're talking about an operational override, which it's seems crazy, but. That's.
Anything about reorganizing the town operation that we've talked about, that actually it's a, that's a change that one would say might require an override because we're investing. You know what I mean? It's not just because it's mismanaged.
Right. Uh, maybe our public work, right? So to that point, we do have a meeting tomorrow, just so you know, just to catch up meeting with both the, uh, town hall and the highway union. Just, I've given them copies of both of the documents, just so if they have any questions about, this is the scope of the study and here's the schedule. And this is the DLS. There's no action planned around any of this. This is just, if you want to ask any questions about what's happening and where we're at in terms of how soon. Or like just to get some of those fears sort of washed, right? A little, so, um, I'll let you know if anything comes out of it.
Sue, Sue, if I have any questions on that tab, I just send your name.
Yeah. I mean, and if you think of something else that would be helpful to pull out in a way that, I mean, our, I always feel like our stuff is pretty straightforward, right? So I, I know the places that we could, you know, I know your options. Do you want to use money from stabilizations to float a year? I don't know. Do you want me to not fund a hundred percent of the help? I mean, I know where every dollar is, right? To get to where we need to get to all the time. What I don't like to do is put together a hypothetical cut list of services until we have a real number from Merzda. Right? Like that's not a, I don't want to go down that route because people get very nervous. I really don't like that, that list doesn't go become public until we get to an override, right? Like.
Yeah, no, I don't think anyone's suggesting that, but I think variable versus contractual, things like that. That's all the stuff we need to understand. And it's there. I'll, I'll hold it out.
Right. Everything that's a driver for us, everything that's elicited as a driver is a.
So do we want to, do we want to schedule a meeting? Do we have the time to schedule a meeting for next week or is it, it's not going to?
So I would, we need to focus on the warrant, right? We're going to need to finish up these budgets. We need to hear from Merzda. We need data before we, the next thing anyway. So that's what all I'm saying is, I think you should be thinking between the fifteenth and somewhere early in April, that we might need to add a meeting here to basically finalize or catch up on the warrant. And do an extra budget meeting, right? And then there won't be anything for us to do until we have direction from town meeting about the budget, right? So there'll be a window there. So.
All right. So we'll keep the meeting in May. We keep the meeting in two weeks and we'll look at adding a meeting after that.
Right. Well, you're definitely going to have to have a second one to review the articles.
Yeah, sure. Right. I'm available if something changes next week.
All right. Right. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, everybody. All those are fair. Thank you. Have a good night.